All right, welcome everybody to the Twelton City Council, August 28th, regular city council meeting. Tonight, we'll start off in our usual manner with a pledge of allegiance led by City Council President.
Councilor Pratt.
That brings us to announcements and a new employee introduction, Jamie Zamren, our new management intern. Welcome. Welcome, Megan.
Hello, everybody. So I am very excited tonight to introduce you to our management intern, Jamie Zamren. Jamie is a student at Portland State University in the Master of Public Administration program specializing in, of all things, local government. She's relatively new to the West Coast. She moved out to Portland for school, but she originally comes from Pennsylvania. In her undergraduate, she majored in international relations and Spanish, and we have already taken advantage of her language skills at some of our recent events. So in addition to her studies at PSU, she's also a long-distance runner for Portland State and involved with their intercollegiate athletic council there. She'll be with us for at least a few months. She started at the end of July, and she's going to be working on a variety of projects and experiences. One of the things we had her do was take minutes for one of the work session items this meeting, for example. But she'll also be working to help make the CIO grant program a bit more accessible for the CIOs, and so she started to dig into that already as well. Let's see, what else did I want to share? Lastly, I also want to acknowledge that we have had a great relationship with Portland State University over the last few years. Sherilyn's been involved with their local government advisory council. We've had multiple interns, and we've even hired a few alums, including myself. So, welcome to Jamie.
Welcome, Jamie. Is anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you for having me, and I'm looking forward to working with the CIOs.
All right, great. Thank you for helping out, city staff. As Megan said, we've got a great track record of management interns that come back, get jobs, and then eventually sometimes leave us. I'm thinking of a third person in Happy Valley. And a few other folks, but we ride through a terrific training and look forward to working with you on different projects over the next few months. Anyone else like to say anything?
Vikings.
Go Bikes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us up to the Twelton Library Foundation Vine to Wine Event. And Michelle Schnabel's here. Michelle, how are you? Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us here tonight. I recognize a lot of friendly faces out there from Twelton Rotary and from the Twelton Library Foundation Board. So it's nice to be here talking about Vine to Wine. So we are doing this event again for the Library Foundation Board. It is our 11th annual Vine to Wine Event. I still need to cash in my lunch with Mayor Boobinack from last year, so.
Mike Hanigan's cashing in his from the Historical Society because his expires.
Oh, no.
The last day.
So this year, we're doing it Saturday, October 14th. It's going to be from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. We have six wineries that are going to be featured, and this year we have Straightaway Cocktails joining us as well. We're going to have a couple of local musicians and some nice food offerings. And the proceeds for this event, and the reason we do this is to support the Foundation Board for the library, which does things like the O'Baughn books for the schools in Twalatin, different programs for the Maker Space featured this summer. So maybe Jerian can speak on how the Maker in Residence program went as well this summer.
Yeah, this summer, the foundation sponsored our first Maker in Residence, so we're coming on two years for the Maker Space to be open at the library. And we were able to hire Geraldo Calderon and Nelda Reyes, who came in and provided some arts and crafts workshops, as well as the monthly themed activity that's available in the Maker Space. And then they just wrapped up with a music performance over the weekend. So it was, they were all really well-attended, and it's something that we hope to build on in years to come.
And the, as you can see up here, the Twelton Library Foundation put about $100,000 into that Maker Space in the library in 2021. And it's been such a cool program, and we really want to see that continue to evolve, keep the programs relevant, and equipment evolving and that sort of thing. And that's the kind of thing that the money, that the Twelton Foundation, Library Foundation Board supports. So we invite all of you to attend on October 14th. It's $50 a ticket. And it's, it's a really fun event, and what we're really trying to bring the community together to support the library, continue to have pride in our library and all the ways that it brings the community together. So would love to see you all there.
Tickets are available through the foundation's website, which is twaltenlibraryfoundation.org. You can also purchase them with cash or check at the library, but if you'd like to use your debit or credit card, the website's your best bet.
What is the O'Baughn Book Program?
O'Baughn stands for Oregon Battle of the Books, and that is a reading competition program. So it's, it's kind of like they have little teams that compete against each other answering questions about the books. And this was a program that the foundation has been sponsoring at our elementary schools and middle schools here in Twalatin for a number of years, with changes that have happened in the school system. One of the things that we heard repeatedly from the school librarians was they couldn't provide enough copies of the books to meet the demand in order to continue doing the program. And that's what led to the foundation starting to make an annual donation that supports the library buying copies of these books and then donating them to the school libraries to enable the teams to read the books and compete.
All right. I look forward to attending. I remember the first one.
That's awesome.
First one, yep. Been there, been going every year, you know, except when we shut down for COVID, so. Yeah, so I'd say, so it's cash or check the library, credit cards over the web, and are they on sale now?
Yes, they are.
All right. And where do you go in the library specifically?
The information desk.
Fingers crossed be another great event. I'll be there.
Thank you.
Redeem your voucher. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to public comment, which is an opportunity for anyone to address the council on something that's not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. I have two sign-ups, but you don't have to be signed up, but I'll start up with the sign-ups. Sandy Hamm. Coming up together? Yeah, Sandy and Steve Hamm.
Same stuff.
Okay.
It just gave us a little bit more time.
Welcome.
Thank you. May I go first?
Yeah.
I want to thank the members of the city council for having this forum that we can express our concerns. I really appreciate that, so thank you for listening. As citizens concerned about the volume of traffic now and the traffic that will inevitably spill onto our side streets as a result of the city extending Vermilion Drive across Norwood, we submit this request to have speed bumps added to southwest Vermilion Drive north of Norwood, thus encouraging drivers to obey the speed limit on Vermilion and Boone's Ferry to reduce traffic through the neighborhood. We've obtained signatures from all 26 homeowners along Vermilion Drive, as well as one on Mandan, five on Stono, and nine more on 87th, which is west of Vermilion, who support adding speed bumps to Vermilion. The volume of drivers disregarding the posted speed limits creates dangerous conditions for our families and will only increase. With the addition of approximately 616 residential units currently under construction directly across Norwood from Vermilion, we have the following concerns. The city not requiring Lennar Homes to pay to install a traffic light on Norwood and Boone's Ferry before approving the Autumn Sunset Development, and no additional traffic lanes added to accommodate the volume of traffic on Boone's Ferry or Norwood. This will only increase our volume of traffic on Vermilion Drive. Drivers will take Vermilion to Martinassie to, in an effort to avoid what will be stifling traffic volumes on both Boone's Ferry and Norwood during high-traffic times. Since Vermilion is a straight shot from Norwood to Martinassie, we residents already experienced an unusual high volume of drivers that speed down our street, and that will only be compounded with the new housing under construction, presently by Lennar Homes and LMC Construction. With the popularity of driving apps that navigate drivers efficiently to their destinations, we no longer live in a world where people will accidentally find the most efficient way to their destination. They find them as soon as they get into their vehicles and route to their destinations, and these apps will continue to contribute to the usage of side streets such as Vermilion and Martinassie. An accurate traffic study was never conducted to track the volume and speed on Vermilion Drive prior to extending Vermilion across Norwood and approving the new subdivisions. Therefore, we asked the city of Twelton to install speed bumps on Vermilion Drive before the completion of the Autumn Sunrise Development, and the city paid for them from our road maintenance fees or any other city funds. Sincerely concerned citizens of Twelton Woods. So, thank you.
I want to go on and let you know that there's two attached personal testimonies that some of the neighbors wanted to contribute. But I wanted to share some of the things that I did learn from my neighbors. We've lived on Vermilion for 30 years, and there are several of us that have lived there since the development has been built. And the concerns that I was finding from the neighbors, first of all, I had an overwhelming yes. It took a few times to get somebody to open their door, but the second I told them that I was asking for, to sign a petition for speed bumps on Vermilion, their, their response was, yes, what can I do to help? What else do you need? And I was surprised that I got everyone from Norwood all the way down to the Flag Lot on Vermilion. Every single household signed the petition. And the things that I learned from my neighbors were that they talked to the city council about this already. They've talked to city planning about this already, and the response is that they've never heard about the problem. Or the one that I got from city planning and several other people got this one as well is, oh, people don't take side streets. They don't do that. They won't take side streets. Well, they do take side streets all the time, and we have had increase of traffic, and the speed along Vermilion is extreme, partially because they don't stop at the stop sign, and they could make a whole lot of money. The police could sit there and make a whole lot of money because nobody, nobody stops at the stop sign. They roll through the stop sign, and they look, they look to their left and continue. That was weird. And continue. And then, you know, take a quick look to their right, and so their philosophy is already going by the time, you know, they're not, they're going pretty fast. So that runs into another problem with the houses on Stono and 87th, which I was surprised because I thought, okay, I'm going to see what I can get from these neighbors. And the first five houses on Stono, and the only ones I stopped at, all signed the petition. And they all had the same thing to say, is that you cannot see to pull out from Stono on Vermilion. There's a curve right there, and it's very difficult to see. One of the testimonials in there is from a citizen on 87th. I went to only 10, 11 houses on, on 87th. And out of the 11, I got nine yeses. The only two that I got no's from was one of a gentleman that lives at the very end of Vermilion and 87th, and he rebuilds cars and works, does maintenance. That's my timer.
I'll give you another 30 seconds or so.
Thank you. So those are my only two. The concerns that we have is that children can't play outside. People are running the stop signs. Cars have been hit on Vermilion. My neighbor across the street's daughter's car was hit. My daughter's car was hit one time parked on the street on Christmas Eve. I know of three people that have complained about cars being hit, as well as my neighbor. This was, my neighbor was pulling, I was out watering, and my neighbor was pulling into his driveway, and this just happened like three weeks ago, so he was turning left into his driveway. The car behind him, when he started to slow down, the car behind him pulled over into the other lane, going the opposite direction, and was going to go around him when he was turning left, almost T-boned him. So that is how fast they're driving. I've experienced people speeding and racing down Vermilion onto Norwood right now, and it's, it's definitely out of control.
Okay. So I got a question for Mike and/or Sherilyn. So what is the process for neighbors to request a speed bump? Is there engineering studies required? What's the process?
I don't know off the top of my head. And I'm, we're happy to, Mike McCarthy, our city engineer is here, and we can absolutely follow up with the residents on Vermilion. And I mean, it would, I don't know our policy by heart. I know it is a tool in our toolbox. It's not our first option for tools in our toolbox, but I think it would require an assessment and some kind of working with the neighborhood to figure out what the right speed mitigation and safety mitigations are.
Yeah, because I know, I've known in the past, I remember stop signs are hard to get. I don't know about speed bumps, but I know the police and our traffic folks work together. So I'd ask you to follow up with Sherilyn and with Mike McCarthy.
I did speak with Mike last year, and he's the one that told me that people don't take side streets, and that the study that was done before you guys approved the housing development was something that the police officers had put out and was just doing it because someone had complained about the speed, and that was the study that you used, and based upon the traffic studies that your requirements that I have read, you did not do accurate studies before you approved that housing development.
Okay. I know the police department has cameras they can put up in trees and stuff like that to do studies like that, but I just ask city staff to work.
There are speed bumps on Stono that have, were put on for the very same reason that people were using that as a thoroughfare. And now that Vermilion goes directly into Autumn Sunset, we're definitely going to have a lot of traffic.
All right.
We'll definitely go through the assessment process.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming tonight and let us know. Appreciate your time. I got your letter. I read it.
Yours too, thanks.
All right. Anyone else like to comment or have a comment? All right, is anybody in Zoom, Nicole? All right, with that, I'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like them removed or heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one. Consideration approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of August 14th, 2023. Item number two, consideration of resolution number 5720-23, authorizing the city manager to sign an intergovernmental agreement between the Tiger Twalton School District and the city of Twelton, setting forth requirements for participation in the School Resource Officer Program. Item number three, consideration of resolution number 5722-23, awarding a contract for construction of the 2022 Neighborhood Traffic Safety Project Phase Two. And finally, item number four, consideration of resolution 5724-23, authorizing an increase in Twalton Community Park Sports Field lighting purchase and replacement change order authorization amount. Does any counselor have a request to remove an item tonight?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion in second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on the motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. All right, that brings us to special reports. An update from State Representative Jules Walters, Representative Walters. Where, there she is. She moved over there. Welcome. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you. All right.
You miss being mayor?
Yes. No. Well, yes and no. Even at that. Well, it's so nice to see you all, mayor and counselors. My name, for the record, my name is Jules Walters and the state representative for Twelton, House District 37, so also West Lynn, Lake Grove, River Grove, and Durham. And it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I just wanted to sort of give you a quick update after this long session, which was a bit of a challenge, but we did achieve a lot of things, so. I'll advance forward. I should put my glasses on. I just have like three slides. It's not too bad. I know. So this was my first experience as a, as a first-term state representative. I, as, as the mayor said, I was formerly the mayor of West Lynn, so actually going into the legislation, legislature with elected leader experience I found was really helpful. We had a very large group of new representatives. There was a large turnover after COVID. So it's the most diverse group of, of freshman leaders that we've had ever, so that's really exciting and has made our conversations much richer. So some big wins in the House were Housing, Behavioral Health and Addiction Services, and Stronger Schools. And I have some bill numbers on those. There was $2 billion in funding for housing from House Bill 2001, passed by both the House and the Senate and signed by the governor. We also secured $260 million for semiconductors and research and development. That's a big deal for Washington County, as you know, as we have Lamb Research here, which is our largest employer in the district. And also for the rest of Washington County, we're hoping that we might increase our semiconductor business in the county, which would be a great economic boom. So that was great to go ahead and get that on the table. We also had House Bill 2002. One of the things I heard knocking on doors throughout the district, even, especially in Twelton, was the concern, especially after the Dobbs decision in the Supreme Court, about people's access to healthcare that they need, whether it's reproductive healthcare or gender-affirming healthcare. So we lobbied hard with HB 2002. It was part of the reason the senators walked out. But we passed it in the House after a very, very long emotional day of testimony. And it ended up being passed when the senators came back. The leadership was very strong about keeping it as intact as possible, although, you know, we did, we did, you know. You know, how, we gave the senators some concessions of things that they were holding out for. I guess is the best way to say that. In House Bill 2005, we banned ghost guns. We also passed Oregon's first-ever state-based child tax credit for low-income families. And we, because of our great revenue report that we got in the second quarter, we were able to fully fund education, which was really exciting. So we have over half a million kids in our Oregon schools, and we were able to fully fund those programs for their schooling, as well as early literacy programs were expanded. So that was really exciting. We did have the Behavioral Health Bill, where we now have $153 million for behavioral health, which is so essential. I know 153 billion sounds like so much money, but I think, you know, we, we're going to have to go back and look for some more. Oregon is really needing a lift right now, as most of the nation is, behavioral healthcare. And also the Opioid Harm Reduction Act. We now have Narcan available at pharmacies as well as in public buildings, so that's a huge deal. We all know that the fentanyl crisis is not just in Portland, it's throughout the state, and we need to do what we can to reverse what's happening. So I'm proud, let's see what else I have to tell you there. My chief-sponsored bills were the tolling moratorium, so I, thank you. We have all been in conversations about tolling. I know it's been a long five years since House Bill 2017 passed. I've been an advocate, as well as all of you up there, about how tolling will disproportionately impact West Lynn and Twalatin, Wilsonville, I mean, you name it, Gladstone, Oregon City, Lake Oswego. So when I first got there, I know I was feeling unheard as a mayor. I'm sure Mayor Boobinack, you can agree with that. So that was one of my key issues. It was to get into the legislature and make sure that we were heard. I think we were just sort of being brushed aside as maybe just making a big deal out of nothing and, and not really being heard about the actual boots-on-the-ground impact of this type of plan. Without, you know, a great study on mitigation and diversion and how all those things impact our cities. So we ended up putting in a bill, House Bill 3614, where we, where we got support, Mike Campbell's support and bipartisan support for, for, to stop tolling, which really led our leaders to, to, to listen to us. Mayor Boobinack came down with Mayor Buck and spoke to the Clackamas County Caucus, and I think leadership really heard that this is a real issue, and it impacts our lives every day. So the governor then decided to put a pause on tolling, and our bill just sort of died in committee, which is fine, because the pause is going to extend through 2026 and give us some time to really figure out some alternative plans that will work better for our communities. Recovery High Schools was another chief-sponsored bill of mine. It was dear to my heart. It was work that my good friend Pam Pierce had worked on. Cindy had been involved as well, excuse me, Council, Councilor Hillier, and as well as Rachel Prusak, my predecessor. So it was an honor to be handed this bill to take across the finish line. We now have Recovery High Schools, which are schools for students who are experiencing substance use disorder to, to go to a school while they're in recovery, surrounded by a cohort of other kids who are in recovery. So they're in a safe space on their journey, and they get their high school, their high school diploma. I went to the graduation in June. I just, I didn't have enough Kleenex. It was amazing, just knowing how, how many of the parents in that room didn't even think their kid was going to be alive, and then to have them graduate from high school, it was really inspiring. So I was really grateful to pass that over, get that over the line. I did a resolution honoring the Willamette Falls locks, which celebrated their 150th anniversary this year. The Locks Authority has been created, and we are working hard to get the locks repaired, restored, and reopened. I sit on that committee. I was appointed by the governor, so it's very exciting work. And finally, something that's, it was very important in this area also for our district was a new law to establish sexual assault by fraudulent, let me see, I have it written down here. Where did I put it? Well, what it tell, what it tells us, oh, here it is. It's Senate Bill 974, so I was a chief sponsor of that, along with Senator Meek, which makes sexual assault by fraudulent representation by a medical professional a Class B felony. And I don't know if you read in the news, but we had a doctor who, a family doctor in West Lynn who had been in practice in West Lynn for decades. And finally, a group of young women came forward and said that they had been sexually assaulted. Unfortunately, because of the law, this piece of the law not being in place, they weren't able to bring, the grand jury declined taking him to trial. So hopefully this will be the fix so that people can be heard and start healing from this horrible trauma. So those are some exciting things. Let's see, let me go to the next slide. I'm going to have some town halls upcoming. The first one here in Washington County at the Twelton Public Library, and you have a beautiful library. I'll be with Senate President Rob Wagner and Mayor, that's a typo, Mayor Boobinack and Mayor Schirato from Durham. So I think that'll be a fun one. That's on September 14th. And then there'll be one for Clackamas County at the West Lynn Public Library, again with Senate President Wagner, Mayor Abiel Stosky, Mayor Buck, and Mayor Williams from River Grove, although I haven't heard back from him yet, but I hope that he can attend. So we'd love to see you there. And I'm just, always interested to hear from our constituents about what, what's, what's important to you, you know, this is, these are your communities. Um, everybody has issues that are important to them. Please feel free to reach out to me and my team um, at any time and share your thoughts, concerns. Um, we love to hear from you. Local business leaders, economic development's really important, um, our education system is important. Um, do you have any ideas for future legislation? I always love that. And, um, how I can better serve Washington County and Toowalton specifically. Um, so those are my, uh, legislative, well, those are links to them, which you can't obviously see on a slide on TV, so I'll have to fix that for sure. Um, but this is up on, on your website and you can link to it from your website. So you'll see how to reach me at Salem. I'm on Instagram and I'm on Facebook and I love, you know, to hear from people. So thank you. Any questions?
Questions? This is your chance. Uh, councillor Hillier than councillor Brooks.
So thank you. It's always lovely to see you.
Nice to see you too.
Thank you. Um, so a lot of discussion in my neighborhood and I'm sorry if I didn't speak with the mayor about this first, but I'm wondering what sort of, um, plans and, um, conversations are being had about the gun noise?
The gun noise, yes. So this, this one is new to me. I just, uh, learned more about it. Well, I, I heard a little bit about it from Representative Prusak, but she handed it off to me and I've been working closely with Representative Neuron. We were trying to first try to figure out whose district it is in. I think it's actually in hers now with redistricting, but it, it packs both of our districts. Um, so we were, um, invited to go to the, to the gun club and we met the gentleman who, who runs it and along with Greg Leo, um, who is an advocate and also a member of the gun club. And we had a, a very long tour, learned a lot about the history, um, and also heard the noise and it's clear that there is noise. So we are continuing to work to establish enough trust to find a solution that's going to work uh, for both the gun club and the community.
So is that different than the one that had been proposed to build the?
Well, I think the first piece is gonna have to be to, to do the sound mitigation study and then, and then figure out what we can do to mitigate sound if needed. Um, obviously for, for many of the close neighbors, they're clear that it is needed. I don't know if the gun club feels that way, so it didn't, it didn't seem like that. So we have to first understand what the data says so that we can have a real frank conversation.
And does it look like there's an opportunity to find funding to do that study?
Um, I hope so. I can definitely talk to President Wagner, um, when, you know, it, he's on Ways and Means or he participates in Ways and Means and what decides what gets funded at the end of the day, along with Speaker Ray Field. Um, so I could definitely speak to them both and, uh, they, I believe President Wagner already has heard and knows, um, what a significant issue this is for the local neighbors.
Yeah, thank you for the update. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councillor Brooks.
Thank you. Congratulations on your first, uh, session, getting through it and, um, and your appointment from the governor on the last. That's really incredible and great news. Um, I also wanted to thank you for your work on the tolling and I think that it's so important, even when we heard from tonight about remembering that our community is faced with, um, an expanding urban growth boundary coupled with being abutted right onto I five. And so a lot of the concerns that we hear about land use and diverted traffic is consistent and, and, um, and important to everybody. And I think that, um, the concern about health and wellbeing with traffic just sitting, stopping in front of our schools and our homes, as well as increasing costs for goods and services, um, because of transportation with our business is really important. So I know that you'll work with us closely on how we move forward around the tolling conversation. And also just planning and land use conversation, including um, livability, environmental awareness, as well as, um, development in a mindful, smart way. Um, there's just a lot of ways that the state comes at it that's different than the way that the city comes at it. And there's a lot of, um, you know, uh, hopefully we can work better in that, because I think there's a misunderstanding around what our responsibilities are in the city and how we can, um, meet all the requirements of the state in a way that's, um, viable in a way that we have a voice. So I appreciate you stepping up and serving. I know it's not easy serving, especially right now in this climate and, um, and thank you for bringing a part, bringing, um, forward bipartisan legislation on, especially tolling. And then I also want to thank you just as a behavioral health professional, um, in living in another area and practicing and find it very difficult to practice in the state. I don't enjoy practicing in the state because, um, the resources are just not here to do a solid practice, in my opinion, for a therapist. Um, but we have a crisis, uh, mental health crisis and a suicide crisis in our state, and I appreciate your efforts towards that and protecting our kids.
Thank you. And another piece of legislation that passed was funding for uh, the nine-eight-eight suicide prevention hotline. So if, if you know anybody that's in crisis or that may be something you wanna lift up on your, um, social media, uh, that is a great resource to make sure that we're sending the right people over to the right per, to the person's house when they're having a crisis.
Councillor Prinsos.
So thank you for coming in and updating us. Um, I am encouraged by your support for the schools. I wanted to give you some information on the unenrollment rate of our Toowalton School District. We have, uh, eight percent reduction in enrollment in the twelfth school district. We have five percent enrollment, disenrollment in the state, which equates to about thirty thousand students in our school district in Orion. Funding is a big problem, as you can see. Um, I'm happy that you, you, you led this initiative to support these kids who are in addictions. It's very important to get them to the finish line. Um, but we have a crisis in our school districts right now with unenrollment and it's a big problem. Uh, the twelfth school district had to lay off about sixty-two teachers, increase, uh, dip into the reserve study, in the reserves, uh, increase the bottom of our taxes, on and on, to try to blunt the force of the problems schools are having. Uh, so if there's more you can do there to support our schools, it would be greatly appreciated. Um, but I wanted to give that information. The other thing I want to just highlight the support for the H two B program, which is a worker program that the state of Oregon, um, pushes through and helps through. I think there's a pause right now, but I would like to encourage you to support the H two B program because it is a, a force that is needed for labor, for manufacturing in this area. Uh, the H two B program always, there's never enough visas, ever, to, to fill all the requirements for jobs, even though we are actively looking to hire locally uh, in the trades, promoting, uh, recruiting, um, interns everywhere. Um, so I just want to highlight those two things, okay?
That's great. Thank you very much. And I think, I think when we talk about, you know, making sure that we have the workforce, housing is so closely tied to that. And when I toured Lamb Research, that was the one, number one thing they said, the trouble in recruiting workers is they're going all the way down the I-five corridor past Eugene so that people can afford to work, um, here, but live there, because they can't afford an apartment in this area and/or Westland or surrounding areas. Um, and that's just, you know, we need to be doing better. So I'm proud of the work that you've been doing. You guys have great diversity in your housing stock. That's not the case for all of the suburbs in the Portland metro area. So I'm really glad that you guys have been proactive in making sure that we have plenty of options for people to live and work and be well in the community of Toowalton.
Councillor Prinsos.
Hi. Well, we're so glad to have you at the state level because, um, being a prior mayor, you understand the importance of home rule and unfunded mandates. Are kind of sore spots for us on occasion.
I hear ya.
Yeah. Um, one thing I was with the housing is like, um, I would love to see, and this was the situation I had when I bought my first home, that there was, I lived in a different state and we were able to get in a state program where you had, you know, the state helped you get into your first home. Hmm. And I think there's such a lack of, we, we talk about this workforce housing, but, um, I think it's just virtually impossible for most people to make that leap right now. So I'm wondering if the state could ever have a program where, you know, basically you had to have a lower down and they help you get a lower interest rate, so it was affordable.
Yeah, and there's federal programs that do that. I'm not sure exactly what we have available at, at state level, so I can look into that and report back to you for sure. I think that's a great idea. As, I have three, three adult kids, so I know, I know how impossible it is to try and live here.
Yeah, and even, I mean, I mean, we're having some townhomes built in autumn sunrise and I'm expecting they'll go for five hundred thousand. And if you're making seventy thousand, that's, doesn't pencil out.
No, that's right, that's right.
And, um, of course, on the tolling, you know, and, um, all that you've done, we really appreciate you advocating, because you know all the issues. We don't need to go into that, but, um, I, and we, there's a big concern right now, and I'm sure you're aware of it, but just that, um, as that gas tax diminishes, that we get our share of whatever replaces that going forward.
Yeah. Well, we'll have to figure that out because that's part of what tolling is supposed to replace, is that diminished gas tax. Um, but you know, people are still using the roads, so there's a question of, you know, per, per mile, you know, traveled. We'll have to see what solutions come up. Um, I am, I'm looking forward to it. I think, however, right now for just tolling at the Abernathy Bridge and then also just north of Stafford is, is, is it gonna work? And I think ODOT finally hears that. Um, but, you know, we're still gonna have to, like, I, I used to always say, like, it's either taxes or tolls, but the roads aren't gonna fix themselves, right? So we have to be prepared to figure out what this other funding structure is gonna look like and how it comes out equitably and fairly with minimal impacts to local communities.
Other questions?
I know the mayor has a question. I was just waiting.
I gave you a heads up on the, on the softball one. Uh, so rumors have it, uh, public is maybe not cooperating and, uh, the short session might not occur. What are you hearing? Because thorn run, all the lobbying firms are hearing it, the MMC is hearing it. What's, what's the inside baseball?
Well, I think that for those that participated in the walkout, um, they really have nothing to lose by walking out again, right, at this point? So it is possible. I know that we're working on fixes on the quorum issue so that this doesn't happen, which is what this, the measure was supposed to do originally. Uh, they found the loophole. Um, so hopefully we'll do that better next time. Um, and if they walk out during the short session, you know, probably have to have a special session, I, you know, it's very frustrating. It was very, the oddest part, I would say, was knowing certain senators were not coming to the floor to vote, but they were still showing up to committee. So I'd be sitting in my committee meeting with, you know, senators on each side that had walked out, but they were still, you know, in committee. So that, it was just very odd. It was very odd. Um, I understand how frustrating it is when you're in the minority. I've been on city council where nobody wanted to pass anything I wanted to pass. Um, but you'd still show up. That's the job. You know, you, 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 the people ask you to show up and you just have to be there. It's the way it is. Um, and I think there's a way for, uh, for us to continue to try and work in a bipartisan, bicameral way to make sure that everybody's feeling heard and that, um, but also that we're passing legislation that people are asking for.
Uh, I, I also want to thank you for your assistance on tolling. Uh, you've been a valuable resource for me to get our message heard and trips to Salem. You've been great in communication with me. I very much appreciate that. Same thing with the gun noise. You and Rep. Neuron have been terrific. Uh, working with the IBAC, you know, CIO folks on a resolution. I very much appreciate you going out to the gun club to help nurture that relationship. Um, because that's what I think it's gonna take is a, a relationship or trust in order to move this forward. Ideally, we get, we do get the funding from the state for the mitigation plan and then it's something we can implement together with the gun club um, to get this noise down. So we very much appreciate your time on that. And finally, my ask about future legislation is a relook at CFEC. Um, climate-friendly, climate-friendly, equitable communities that was, uh, under Governor Brown and the cities sued the state over it.
Um, oh, is that with the parking spaces?
Parking stuff, all that transportation stuff. That, uh, you know, we look at it again and we uh, maybe change, tweak it a bit.
Okay.
Looking at what, you know, what the cities don't like and maybe be a little more flexible.
Well, it has to be different for each city, right? I mean, we all have different constraints, right? So, yeah, I can definitely look into that and find out where we are on it. I know that, um, uh, the governor is, you know, really responding, you know, if, to the housing crisis in a strong way. We just have to find something that works for all the cities as well.
Exactly. It can't be bored of playing like CFEC was.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else? I appreciate you coming out tonight.
Well, thank you. Well, I hope to see you guys. Oh, yeah, and my husband Joe. Everyone's like, hi, Joe. Thank you so much. I really appreciate, appreciate all of you. And, um, you know, I wouldn't be able to do this work without your support. So as I said before, please reach out to me whenever, um, and that goes for anybody who's watching tonight as well.
Up to the twelfth library.
I know.
Yep.
All right, sounds good. Thank you so much.
All right. So that brings us to public hearings. Uh, item number one, Basalt Creek Employment Zone Ordinance One Four Eight Zero Dash Twenty Three. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this ordinance. And we'll start off with city planners, uh, Steve Cooper taking the lead.
Good evening, Mayor and Councillor. I'm Steve Cooper, Assistant Community Development Director, and I'm pleased to be here tonight with Aaron Engman, Senior Planner, and we're going to present to you the hearing item for the Basalt Creek Employment Zoning District. And I presume, Mayor, you have a script to read?
I don't think so. It's an ordinance.
Okay, we don't, no, no script. Okay, great. Then with that, time, time saved right there. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Aaron to begin the presentation. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. Council members, I am excited to share our Basalt Creek Employment Zone project in ordinance with you tonight. This project has been a year in the making. And while our consultants are not here to join us tonight, we did retain HHPR, DKS Associates, Leland Consulting Group, um, through an RFP process to assist with the technical analysis and development of our project. And I understand that our industrial stakeholder group is here tonight and they have a presentation that they'd like to share after our staff presentation.
Just point, so it's gonna be you and then Bill? And then them?
Correct. Yeah. We'll provide the planning commission recommendation towards the end of our presentation.
All right, thanks.
And with that, we have quite a few slides to cover tonight, so I'll do my best to keep us on track and be mindful of everyone's time. But tonight's discussion will lay the project foundation and then we'll move on to share some limitations found in our manufacturing park zone. Highlight findings in the adopted economic opportunities analysis and urban renewal plans that informed our project. Um, we also did some extensive public outreach as part of this project and I want to share what we learned. And then I'll highlight elements of our Basalt Creek Employment Zone for you tonight. And we'll end with the plan, amendment approval criteria and the planning commission recommendation from Chair Bill, Bill Beers. Then, for some project background, tonight we're discussing um, an area in the Basalt Creek, planning area that's now designated manufacturing park zones. You'll see that in this turquoise area. Um, it's bound to the north by Tomquin Loop Road. We've also included some wayfinding elements here. And then to the south of the zone is the Wilsonville Planning Area, which is bordered by what's considered their light industrial designation. Uh, this area is roughly a hundred fifty-six acres gross and about ninety acres net and buildable. So when walking through the project, it's nice to begin with some fundamentals to provide some background and context. So what is being proposed? Tonight, we're discussing the Basalt Creek Employment Zone, which is going to be a new industrial zoning code for this Basalt Creek area. Um, and why is new code needed? Communities typically revisit their zoning code on a periodic basis to ensure that the code continues to promote the desired character of the community while not being overly burdensome or obsolete to turn good developers away. And why are we looking at this now? We're hoping that this will act as a catalyst for development and to grow tax base within our urban renewal areas. And then this code was created by carefully studying economic and market trends and by incorporating council, the public and stakeholder feedback. And with that, I'll turn this next slide over to Steve.
Thank you, Aaron. So on this slide, we're just highlighting at a high level some of the permitted light manufacturing industrial uses that are allowed in the existing manufacturing park zone. Um, this zone was created, as I'm gonna talk a little bit more about on the next slide, um, with the specific intention of being restrictive so as to encourage large-scale manufacturing and research facilities in the zone. Um with the specific intention of being restrictive so as to encourage large scale manufacturing and research facilities in the zone. Um so the manufacturing park or MP zone is originally created in the late nineteen eighties to support the Leavitton Urban Renewal Area. Which is just adjacent to our site where we're having this meeting tonight. Um as you'll see on the next couple of slides, it's nearly fifty percent undeveloped. Um and has had particularly limited recent development activity despite being what one might consider shovel ready, meaning that all of the. Utilities are available, sewer water, uh roadway facilities are fully improved. Although there was initial success in this manufacturing park zone in the Leavitton area, there's no longer market demand. Um tying in with what Aaron mentioned previously for the type of development that's allowed under these limited uses. And so our lessons learned from the manufacturing park zone that exists have informed the need for creating the new zoning code to support. The Basalt Creek Urban Renewal Area. So here's a graphic representation of the manufacturing park zone in Leavitton. As you can see, we're over here. To the right hand side of the slide in the city service center tonight. Herman Road forms kind of the southeast edge of the area. And then it's bounded on the north by Talton Road uh to the south by the. Uh by Leavitton Drive and then property south of that as well as by Wetland to the uh left hand side or west by a hundred and twenty fourth. Into the right hand side or east by a hundred and eighth. As you can see, it's about a hundred and ninety three acres gross. Or a hundred and sixty seven point five acres net buildable, so it's roughly double the size of the uh MP district in the Basalt Creek area. But despite all that, um we have about eighty acres undeveloped. Um and some of that is. Uh long term property ownership, the property south of Leavitton Drive is owned by Nike. Um as well as property that is owned by pro- property owners that have had either. Troubled finding suitable uses for the site, the case of um JAE is one example. Where they've created a lot to sell off and they've had a hard time finding suitable buyer for it based on limitations of the zone and so forth. And then I'll. End on one final slide just showing um to kind of drive home the final point. Showing some of the years of development of buildings in this manufacturing park zone. So um again. You know, the zone was created in the late eighties, primarily most of the development happened in the early to mid nineteen nineties. Um some smaller building additions did happen in the two thousands, two thousand and ten, particularly post the last recession. A couple of minor things, but by and large, development has tapered off and is. Um with some small exceptions, uh harder and harder to occur.
And if we take a look back to twenty twenty two, we brought this concept to council in a work session. And we were then directed a staff to look at updating and modernizing land uses in the manufacturing park. Zone for this planning area. And we used employment and infrastructure goals identified in the adopted Basalt Creek Concept Plan. The Economic Opportunities Analysis and the Southwest and Basalt Creek Development Areas are North Star. Um council also provided specific direction to limit warehousing uses and corresponding truck traffic. To encourage flexible tenant space development, incorporate commercial uses that could be um utilized by either nearby businesses. Or residents and to maintain a really nice landscape feel. Okay, and with that, I kind of want to highlight some goals that were included in our Economic Opportunities Analysis, which I refer to as one of our North Stars. Um we found that Walton is forecast to grow by about six thousand new industrial employees over the twenty year horizon. Approximately two thousand of these new jobs are identified in the Basalt Creek area. And that equates to an average of fifteen employees per net acre, which is kind of substantial for industrial zone. Um I also want to kind of do an overview of why firms locate where they do. Um primarily, they're looking for. Land availability, skilled workforce and also access to local infrastructure like water and sewer at an affordable service price. Um also looking for access to main transportation routes like I five and Highway ninety nine and two seventeen. Um we're also looking for material availability and industry clusters and what I mean by that is. Co- co-locating uses that are compatible and supportive to manufacturing and industrial uses. And these could be warehousing or wholesale sales. When businesses are able to locate next to material suppliers and distributors, it helps alleviate potential supply chain disruptions while supporting. Twelton's industry clusters. And how does public policy affect these decisions? We use regulations to protect a community's quality of life. However, on the flip side. If regulations become too burdensome, they become disincentives for businesses to locate in a community. So we're kind of looking for that sweet spot of straightforward regulations. That can reduce a burden on businesses so that they can remain nimble and remain competitive in marketplaces. And based off this Economic Opportunities Analysis, we're finding that the manufacturing and industrial business groups. Are looking for some of the smaller to midsize manufacturing sites. So this could be anything under ten acres. Um generally, there's a flexible component where these businesses will be. Grouped or co-located and have um proximity to some commercial businesses. Um this sort of development has low vacancy rates. And um I think overall what this slide is conveying is that flexible tenant space development has replaced what once was. Owner occupied purpose built development. And on this slide, I kind of want to go through some of the wage information that was included in this opportunities analysis. You'll see that the dates from twenty seventeen, so it's a little dated, um but it does have some good information. So if we're looking at the average Washington County wage, this was um just around sixty five thousand dollars. And then Twelton specific was below sixty thousand, maybe at about fifty eight thousand. And then when you start looking at subsectors, you'll see that manufacturing is quite nice where on the average. It came in at about eighty five thousand dollars. Um and you'll see on some subsequent slides that this can vary through. Manufacturing subsector, so not every manufacturing job's going to be this nice, but when you take the average, this is something we could be looking at. And throughout this project, we've heard that automation is a concern to council. So this report had some findings that I wanted to share. Of course, it's a long running, long running trend. Um and that the types of jobs that are being automated are broadening. Although I do want to highlight that the large share of these jobs are paying less than twenty dollars an hour. So I don't think it's necessarily the type of jobs that we're hoping to capture through this zoning project. Um so you'll see that eighty percent of jobs under twenty dollars per hour are looking to be automated in the next twenty years. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Steve to talk about some urban renewal goals.
Thanks, Aaron. Um so again, we have urban renewal goals that were created as part of the Southwest and Basalt Creek. Um development plans is what they were called at the time. Um those include facilitating development and stimulating growth, providing new employment opportunities. Importantly, increasing the area tax base, which is one of the central rules of urban renewal generally, as well as using that. Uh money that increment gained through urban renewal to fund needed transportation and public utility infrastructure improvements. And so how to meet those goals would be by creating development opportunities early in the urban renewal districts planning period. To magnify future opportunity in total tax increment. And so in other words, that having catalyst development that at the early. Years of the total run of the urban renewal districts can help to amplify total tax collection over the run of the district. And then I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. Um so we have forecasts for specifically the urban renewal district in the Basalt Creek area. So under the existing manufacturing park zone, we have um over the thirty year period of forecast of four point five million. Dollars uh due to the fact that the manufacturing park zone again has a limited subset of light manufacturing uses. Whereas under the proposed Basalt Creek Employment Zone, a much more robust projected co- tax collection, tax increment collection of fifty eight million dollars. And so as I mentioned in the slides that I covered before, the MP zone in the Leavitton area, which we're using by analogy. Has had little recent development and it seems likely that it would be the same in the Basalt Creek area. The particular highlight that I'd like to make there when we think about that connection is the fact that unlike the Leavitton area, which was shovel ready. Fully improved with public improvements, the Basalt Creek area has none. And particularly if we're creating a district that is going to be slow to collect increment, the ability of that district to fund those improvements is gonna be very limited. For a very long time. Um so again, greater near term development uh results in more urban renewal revenue. It also does uh two things, one of which is that it creates uncertainty if we don't have uh some. A ability to project that development is likely to happen in the near term and that can potentially delay in installation of infrastructure like public sewer. So for example, in conversations with Clean Water Services, they won't program. The pump stations that we need in the area for sanitary sewer until they have some reasonable certainty that development is likely to occur in the area. Otherwise, they're gonna push that out in their capital improvement plan. The other thing that I think is also important to note is to the extent that uh near term development. Is able to do frontage improvements and do transportation improvements like signalization, like uh, you know. Building lanes uh in the case of Graham's Ferry Road, I mean, it's in deteriorated condition. And so it's the extent that they're doing half street improvements, actually improving. The travel surface of that roadway. Those are also things that don't have to come later out of urban renewal. And then urban renewal can be used to fund some of the other things which get to council priorities around. Uh jobs instead of taking that revenue and spending it down on things that development would normally pay for anyway, so. Just wanted to make those points and with that, I will turn it back over to Aaron.
As part of this project, our consultant helped us with a economic analysis, which studied trends in the Portland metro region. And what we found is that industrial land is hot right now. Um the average industrial rate is really low at three point seven percent. And what that is doing is driving up the price per square footage, so it's more than doubled in the past decade. Because of that, we're seeing some constrained land in this metro or we're seeing constraints in the metro region. So developers are looking to constrain land, which is harder to build and develop on. Or they're going to secondary markets like Salem or Woodburn. We also found that there is a demand for this industrial commercial flex space that we're trying to capture through our Basalt Creek Employment Zone. Um project, again, to act as a catalyst for these urban renewal generation and development. And now we'll kind of cover our public outreach. Um we've really hit the ground running and tried to speak to everyone. You'll see that we had a general open house. We've talked to our neighbors in jurisdictions. Our citizen involvement organizations, the Chamber, um business stakeholder communities and the public at large. We've met with the Planning Com- Commission over three times. Most recently, we met with our Architectural Review Board as recommended by our city council. And they provided some great suggestions, which we've added into our design standards and I'll go through those a little later in our presentation.
And if I, and if I could just interject uh one additional point on this slide, I think that it's also notable to council that. We've also received letters of support from groups such as the West Side Economic Alliance, our Chamber, um McCadden Forbes, Schnitzer. We've also gotten um the ability to address all concerns from the city of Wilsonville, which is not always something that we're able to do on projects. Um as well as gotten a favorable recommendation from our planning commission and support from Architectural Review Board. And I think having gone through other projects, um such as the creation of the mixed use commercial zone in the Bridgeport Village area. And other projects in my career, I think it's notable the amount of support and public interest and involvement in this project despite. The fact that we did do a very robust amount of outreach, we also got a lot back and we're able to incorporate that into the finished product. And so I just want to highlight that for your attention.
Thanks, Steve. That's great to include. In general, I just kind of want to highlight some of this feedback that we've received from the general public. There is obviously concern about. Um roads and maintaining the roads with increased industrial traffic. We also received requests that all uses should be conducted in a completely enclosed building just to mitigate that interface with the residential zone that's nearby. From our stakeholder group, um they've also resonated that flexible tenant space development has. Replaced that owner occupied purpose built development that I mentioned previously. Um and this provides greater flexibility so that they can ensure that they're getting. Their developments occupied by a variety of tenants. And most importantly, to secure capital so that they can build these developments. And uh one last thing that's important and I kind of touched on this when I was talking about co-location and industry clusters, but. Many tenants do require some sort of onsite warehousing or wholesale sales um component just to support their operations. So with that in mind, we developed some guiding principles using this council direction, um what we learned from our economic analysis. From public feedback, um the stakeholder and industry feedback as well as our planning commission direction. So we did our best to learn, to hear and to build that into the code that's before you tonight in ordinance. Um fourteen eighty dash twenty three. You'll see that we have included Plan Text Amendment PTA twenty two dash one. Which is proposing amendments to the comprehensive plan, our municipal code and our development code. Um I want to highlight that we're. Proposing a new chapter sixty five, which would establish this Basalt Creek zoning district and its development standards. And then we also have plan map amendments before you under PMA twenty two dash one. Um this would update a TSP figure, the Transportation System Plan, as well as maps within our comprehensive plan. I also want to highlight the purpose statement of this new zone, which is to provide an environment conducive to the development. And protection of employment uses that contributes to the local economy and support nearby residential uses. Um these ellipses that I have included go on to say such permitted uses must not. Cause objectionable nose, noise, smoke, odor, odor, sorry, excuse me. Dust, noxious gases, vibration, glare, heat. Fire hazard or other waste emanating from the property to protect public health, safety and general welfare. The emphasis of the zone is on providing a variety of manufacturing office and incubator space for established and emerging businesses. Typically in a flex space development pattern, commercial uses are allowed but limited in intensity to maintain adequate employment density. Opportunities and that aligns with Metro's Title Four goals for employment lands. I also want to highlight that this code will support Twelton's advanced manufacturing industry cluster, which makes up a pretty good share of thirteen percent. Of our employment. I also want to highlight that the state of Oregon now recognizes any remaining form of manufacturing. As advanced manufacturing. So when you look at permitted uses, you'll see that we have a variety of heavy and light. Manufacturing uses proposed for this district. And I also want to share that while zoning is one tool that may use to supplement the city's pool of job density. There are a number of strong tools included in our Twelton Economic Development Strategy that was. Um adopted in twenty nineteen. So council may consider directing staff to implement some or all of these strategies under a separate project. I will say that some of these strategies probably have a little bit more teeth than the zoning code. Um. But I just wanted to share that we do have more tools in our toolbox that we can pull from. And with that, I'll highlight some of the proposed uses. You'll see that we've expanded our proposed uses for this zone to include a variety of. Heavy, light manufacturing and um some warehousing freight movement and wholesale sales with bookends. And what I mean by that is that we have um limitations for accessory use. Or maximum size requirements if it's a primary standalone use. We'll be looking for a minimum manufacturing um component onsite that is thirty percent. Of course, it could be higher. And on the ground, it'll look something like this as a minimum of thirty percent. So for this development site, this is approximately five hundred square feet total. And you would get about a hundred fifty two thousand square feet of manufacturing space um throughout the site. Or it could be concentrated in one or two buildings. Sorry, let me back up. We're also proposing a variety of commercial uses. These would meet the metro limitation of five thousand square feet for an individual use or a total of twenty thousand square feet onsite. Um, and to further avoid conflicts with identified freight routes, um these commercial uses must be located on frontage along Graham's Ferry Road. We've also heard that um psilocybin uses are of curiosity in this zone, so I did some research and I found out that a psilocybin clinic. Is treated like a medical office and would be allowed in any zone which allows a medical office use, and that includes this B C E zone. And then other psilocybin uses like the production or storage would be treated as manufacturing or warehousing. And would be allowed in any such zone which allows those uses, including the B C E zone. But in talking to neighboring jurisdictions and learning through the state, these offsite impacts are expected to be minimal. Um, state law prohibits retailing, requires a buffer from schools and residential zones. And also requires a land use compatibility statement from the planning staff. Then I like to move on to highlight some of our design standards incorporated in this code. Um, we've proposed a menu of landscape buffer just to soften that interface with the residential zones. We've also received some good feedback to include a berm component, so you'll see that on this slide, we now have expanded our menu to include a berm if. A developer should so choose, or they can go down to a wall if they want to tighten up that um landscaping setback. Um, I also want to highlight that we're including some building design standards. Within our industrial zones, we don't really have much for building design standards, so. This zone is very intentional about building in that pleasant community interface. And in speaking with our um architectural review board recently, they had suggested that we include this first one, the building composition, just to. Make sure that the massing is appropriate for maybe some of these larger scale buildings that we might see, so that the the facade and the form is broken up. And we have more visual appeal along our street frontages. Um, we also have standards for primary facade that faces public right away and the residential zones and exterior colors. We also have some standards for upper floor appearances, and what we mean by that. Is anything over twelve feet above grade would be considered an upper floor, so we'd be looking for some sort of articulation or. Step back if the buildings are generally up to a four story component, which would be allowed in the zone. And of course, there will be some standards to soften and screen any rooftop mechanical equipment. I just want to share a few um examples of what these building design standards might result in. Now we're kind of in the home stretch, so when we're looking at approval criteria for our plan text and plan map amendment, we'll be. How findings included that um confirmed that this plan meets our statewide planning goals. The Oregon administrative rules, metro code, the Twelton comprehensive plan and the Twelton development code. I also want to highlight that um the proposed project does meet our transportation planning rule evaluation. And that report has been submitted from D K S for the the packet materials. And now we'll bring up Chair Beers to deliver our planning commission recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor and legislators, and Bill Beers and Chair of the Twelton Planning Commission. Um, I've been to almost all of these meetings except the one that we had in June where the everyone but me unanimously recommended this proposal. Um, but I'm pretty well versed in history and I I watched the the meeting again on YouTube, I think I was the fifth viewer. Um, so as the goals we had were uh broadly aligned with the council's goals. Um, eliminating the warehouse use, encouraging flex space, uh maintaining uh the green space was a big one for us. And that's something we heard in our March meeting from the C I O representatives that came in. Um, and then also the incorporation of neighborhood commercial uh uses within the zone. I think that would would be nice to complement the neighborhood commercial over by Plant Bed Gardens, because otherwise there's not a lot on this uh south end of town there. Um, one of the things we were interested in uh on the green space and landscaping was a. Four seasons worth of landscape standards, uh and so the staff did a great job of taking that feedback in March and bringing it back to us in June. Um, with the table that Aaron just showed you. Um, just looking at my notes here, uh and then with the the design standards we just touched on, um. And it that our goal is we wanted this to look nice, like the rest of the city looks nice, and I think it will also have a benefit of. Helping to attract and retain employees, like it's nice to go to a place that looks nice. Yeah, we recommend it.
Thanks. Questions?
With that, I'll conclude the the presentation, open it up for questions.
All right, um. I hold off on questions, because I know there's some folks who want to talk, uh. Because I usually do, it's public area, so we have people in favor, so I guess we'll open it up with the thing. They have a presentation for the applicant or. Or presentation from developer.
Our stakeholder group is interested in making a presentation, and then um if it pleases the mayor to call others who might want to testify, and then we're happy to answer questions.
Yeah, so I'll circle back on questions. Hey, Mimi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
This is it, separate or it's the same?
Um, I'm going to start and then um some of those other folks would also like to speak. But um out of respect, we'll try and keep everything brief.
Okay.
Um, my name is Mimi Dukas, I'm with A K S Engineering here on behalf of many stakeholders in this process. Um, I am joined by a technical team, including Kittleson, uh Johnson Economics and um McCann Forbes. Um, first of all, big thanks to staff, uh you heard from their presentation, there has been a lot of work that has gone into what's before you tonight. Um, there has been feedback from all the stakeholders, not just uh the economic side of things, but also the residents. Um, particularly to the north, um there's sensitivity to how this district transitions into the existing neighborhood and the future residential neighborhood. How it relates to traffic, livability, all of those things. But economic vitality is a huge component of Twelton, it what's, it's what makes you a very healthy city, um it keeps your bu- budget balanced each year. It lets you do really cool um things as a jurisdiction, so economic development matters. And and we've heard from staff that they they understand that, um. Industrial development is a complicated topic and staff has learned an awful lot, we've all learned an awful lot over the last year. Um, this, the proposal before you tonight is very well thought out. Um, we think it strikes a good balance between the flexibility needed in the marketplace, but also ensuring that manufacturing is a component of that. So it is based on that feedback from um the stakeholders, it's also based on technical analysis from. Uh, two different economists from the city's consultant of Leland and also uh Johnson Economics. We have two transportation consultants that have reviewed this to make sure that the transportation has been considered, so that is D K S and also Kittleson and Associates. Um, it's gone through the Chamber of Commerce, their uh business advisory group, and also the um planning commission, city council work sessions with you all. So the code itself, uh staff did a good overview of that, I don't want to repeat too much of that, but uh fundamentally, it provides a minimum of thirty percent manufacturing as a use. So that's a good foundation, beyond that, it allows the flexibility for the marketplace to find that right balance. It does not mean that you can't put a hundred percent manufacturing, that opportunity is still there. Thirty percent is a minimum, so everybody can exceed that if the market um has the the user available. But those are kind of magical end users, if we can get one, hooray for everybody. Um, we addressed the large building concerns with a maximum square footage of a hundred fifty thousand square feet. We'll show you some images of that, um. So it allows for existing businesses to stay within the city of Twelton. That's very important, you've got such a limited land supply, you're actually losing some employers right now. Um, so this will help triage that a little bit. And fundamentally, that urban renewal district is a very important economic development tool, it's similar to a four one K. The earlier you invest, the the money grows, the value grows, and um it's healthier at the end of the day. Um, and it's fundamentally a reduction in traffic from the traditional M P zone. So flex industrial space, we've talked about this a little bit, um it allows for flexibility in uses and sizes. Um, it's smaller in scale, I think that's part of the important transition with the residential neighborhoods and the aesthetic of this um employment use. Um, it's got enhanced architectural treatments and uh increased parking for the traditional employees. Side by side, I know everybody does better with graphics, um so. Here we've got site plans and elevation showing a traditional distribution center um versus flex industrial, so you can see. Flex industrial has a multitude of businesses instead of singular large businesses, um. Large warehouse has a significant truck trailer, um large vehicle, it's accommodated for that distribution. Um, for the flex industrial, you get more of that architectural treatment, you get windows, you get facades, you get a variety of materials. Um, the heights are substantially different, so you need that clearance height in manufacturing or in a large warehouse, so you can get up to forty-two feet. In height uh for for uh stacking. Uh, the flex industrial is closer to a thirty foot height. Uh, landscaping is a significant difference, and that's where I think some of that compatibility really comes in. Um, you've got minimal landscaping for warehouse use, um for flex industrial, you've got a higher amount, it's more of a campus feel to it. So we've shown you some pictures before, um it just has more of that campus feel to it, glazing, landscaping, um. Smaller scale, you don't have those big truck maneuvering areas. Um, it does have a high employment density, um that is important, obviously, for residents and and the economy. Um, we've talked about wage levels, staff talked about that. Um, and then the for the tax revenue, we'll talk about that a little bit about the urban renewal. So the this chart shows you the projections of what uh slow growth versus um faster growth. Looks like relative to your urban renewal, so um under that flex space, you're going to get development faster. And that means that tax increment, that delta between what is out there today. Um, versus uh the ultimate tax revenue of the new development, that increment goes into the infrastructure investments. The tax increment revenue under the B C E is fifty-seven million dollars at the end of the thirty years. Because of that early growth, with the traditional M P zone, you're at twenty-eight point one million, that's a substantial difference. All of that goes into infrastructure, it can be your roads, your sewer, um lighting, landscaping, uh things like that. So we think the current draft is a good mixture of uses, um it gives you that urban renewal support. Um, still allows the opportunity for full manufacturing, that door has not closed. And reduces traffic impacts um based on the the reduced number of um truck traffic. It does have living room jobs and um importantly, those design standards are going to be more compatible with the existing and future residential. So with that, we do have our full technical team, we do recommend approval of the uh draft code before you this evening, or happy to answer any questions.
We'll circle back.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So with that, I'll go ahead and open uh the floor for public comment. Uh, those folks who are in favor of us uh passing ordinance and those who are in opposition. I do have several folks signed up for uh in favor, so Mimi, that was yours or, all right, next up is uh Peter Watts.
Welcome, Mr. Watts. Thank you, Mayor, I feel like I've spent a lifetime on this project, um though it's only been about seven years. Uh, this is not the zoning we were hoping for at the at the beginning of this process, and the mayor and and several uh others know that. Um, I had substantial concerns about the the zoning that. Uh existed that we're looking at at the time, though I've had, uh I just want to thank your planning staff, I think they've done an incredible job of being responsive. To to market, to the market and and also to kind of Mimi and other experts that spend a lot of time on this. And the folks at McCann Forbes would tell you that they've spent way too much time on the phone with me trying to allay my concerns, um because it's, this is still a pretty restrictive. Uh zoning, and I I've worked with a lot of uh cities that have industrial parks. Um, and and I think there's so much market demand that something could happen and it could happen fast. Um, though this is really restrictive, and so this truly is a is as far as I'm concerned, a compromise. Um, and if if we go with the more restrictive zoning, I think that. Based on the phone calls that I've gotten from people that are interested in the property. And based on the county zoning, which is in now, so unlike your other industrial park, we would be able to use. Or the end owners would be able to use um the county zoning. I think that in all likelihood, it would probably be construction companies using these parcels for parking. And and there are several that are invested, that are interested in in our parcel, um just because it's the location, which is the southern tip. Um, and unfortunately, as someone that's dealt with a lot of urban renewal, what that means is that you won't get any increment whatsoever. And so I think that um, you know, I I've watched as the city's kind of struggled with finding the right balance. Um, I think you've done a great, your staff's been a great job. Um, I would really encourage you to adopt this, it's obviously not the outcome I was hoping for, um Herb's, her class is no longer with us, but um. Not what he was hoping for too, but it it's something that I think everyone can live with, and I think it will jumpstart that urban renewal area. And the faster you guys get through that, the faster you can get these taxes back on the rolls. So I know that's something that cities with inflation concerns and everything else really want to see happen. So thank you for your time today, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Great, uh Steve Par.
Uh, hi, my name's Steve Par and I live on Tonkin Loop. Lived there thirty-three years now, and we had a family and a and a horse operation there and agriculture and. And everything else, and so uh two years ago, I would have been bound pounding on the on the desk here saying, I don't want to change, I don't want to change, but. We're halfway through the change now. A lot of the businesses, a lot of farms are all gone, they're torn down or whatever. And so now what we live in is we live in a in an area that there's no character at all, because all the homes are gone. And so we, I can go out there any day of the uh of the week and hear at least. Ten dump dump trucks, heavy equipment, whatever going by, so the neighborhood is all changed, it's not the same. So my recommendation is is uh, this looks like a good plan to me, because there's so many areas of the park that's different. It's not all the same, it it's got plenty of uses, and so I would hope that soon. That your group would recommend something, this looks like a good plan, but making no decision. This makes the area that I live in, that I that I really love from thirty-three years, turn into just a big desert, it just looks awful, so. I'd like to see something happen, and I I uh I know from doing research that the developers that are. Uh, on deck, ready to to do something are credible people, and I think there'd be a real plus to fault. Thank you.
Thank you. Twelton Chamber of Commerce, Ann Leah.
Good evening, good to see all of you, thank you for letting me speak. Um, I am the CEO of the chamber, so I talk a lot to our businesses and especially my board. As you know, I have eleven of the most powerful uh polished professionals uh Twelton can offer. And they are in favor of this development, um and. And I'm here to ask you to please adopt this plan. They're very concerned, all the businesses I'm talking to, about not having the established businesses not having a place to go to stay in Tuolton. They're starting to look at Sherwood and Woodburn and Wilsonville, and that's scaring me half to death because I need them to stay with us. And I know that the city would like them to stay with us. So we've worked very hard and I do commend your planning department as well. I've never seen people work so hard on on this such an issue long and hard. It's been a long year of examining this. So I'm here in favor of this plan and ask that you adopt it tonight. Thank you.
Right. Thanks. Next up is Stu Peterson. Welcome, Stu.
Hello, I'm Stu Peterson. I've been a commercial real estate broker in the city for forty forty two years. Yeah, all right. And you know, obviously I've been in favor of the plan. You know, Sherwood had a huge area over there on the east side or on the 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 east side of their city and the west side of yours at Layfallow for quite a few years because of the restrictive zoning. They formed a task force or did something just like this. And you know, I've I hate to tell you this, but you know, Lamb Research, one of your major employers, is leased three hundred thousand feet over three hundred and fifty thousand feet over there in the last two years because they had the space available, including a fab plant development where they put fifty million dollars into a fifty thousand square foot space. And these businesses make decisions quickly. They don't have time to to go through the laborious process of permitting a development for their own building. They need the space there. The the space that first class industrial parks like this provide are basically your warehouse for your for your own, your businesses in your community. And Tuolton has had an acute shortage of this now for the last three and a half years. So you know, I I another major employer who I have a gag order on has moved to Sherwood last week, signed a lease and will be going there into some of their new developments. And I've moved companies, as Analia mentioned, down to Dallas, Oregon, because they couldn't find space here. A major manufacturing company expanded down there. So I've seen this work. I've seen this zone be altered and seen how the developers were able to get financing, which they couldn't do under these restrictive zones. Somebody mentioned the JE property. I'm the listing agent on it. I've had it for two years. It's a white hot industrial market. I can't sell seventeen acres because of the zone. So I, you know, obviously I'm very much in favor of this and the and I had a broken record, but the stuff that staff presented there, being an industrial property geek, I was really impressed with the accuracy of the the market data and and the just the overall presentation was completely what I see every day in in my in my job. Recommend approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Stu. All right. Anyone else who's not signed up who would like to to spy in support of the ordinance? Anyone on Zoom? I think she's probably in opposition. Okay. All right. Last call for in support. Right? Those in opposition of passing this ordinance, I assume Grace.
I I like make sure that you can hear me. Can you do that?
We can hear you, Grace.
Oh, great. Thank you. Hi, hi, everybody. I had just have five quick points that I'd like to summarize of my previous submission to the city. I unfortunately, they were only submitted late last night because we were never provided a written notice of the hearing today. Although I am speaking with many of my neighbors on the eastern port directly, eastern portion of the proposed district were never informed of the hearing by mail. So I'm sorry of the delayed in in email that I sent today. I hope that people were able to to use that and utilize and read it in time for this meeting. So summary of my concerns are listening to the presentation today. I don't hear the integration of this district into the fabric of the community, either within the Basalt Creek area or within the southern portion of the Tuolton city of of city. And that's of great concern because it should be, the planning should be a comprehensive review of the entire region and how this will be have positive outcomes for everyone. These second point is that the there is the specific, the the criteria for which the 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 city has identified for evaluation of the proposal does not include multi modal transportation. It has removed multiple roads that would provide interconnections with other with locally and regionally. It eliminates a connection, a vehicle, the only vehicular connection to the multiple hundreds and millions of dollars the cities had just spent on a purchase of parklands in the Basalt Creek area. The road that is the only road that would be provided access to that land on the west side of the Basalt Creek Canyon has been eliminated. The road has also eliminated acreage of buildable lands for residential property zones residentially that the city will then eliminate possible development on. The proposal also provides inadequate land use planning for the Basalt Creek area regarding downstream lands within the Willamette River watershed, which the proposed district is in. And the city has not yet developed a stormwater management plan for that area. It also has limited protections for property, citizens and significant resources within the Basalt, the Basalt Creek area, the Willamette watershed and the city is responsible for providing those types of protections. It's we have submitted in our written communications yesterday of all of the many of them, but not all inclusive. There are additional ones that we can provide as to the the criteria, evaluation criteria from the Oregon statewide land use planning guidelines for residential development, for recreational development and the transportation development are transportation goals for provision of of pedestrian and other multi bicyclists for the that should be included and were not addressed in the applicant's submission. I would request any questions be submitted to me or I'll be glad to address any of them if you have any.
All right. Thank you, Grace. Anyone else? So with that, I'll now ask the city council for presenting questions for either Steve's team or Mimi's team. Council President Pratt.
I'll start it off. I guess Steve.
I apologize, Your Honor. That last commenter made a question whether proper notice had been given under state and local law. And I wanted to invite staff back up. What I'm reviewing is exhibit one to the ordinance that contains the staff's analysis and findings. And on page six, there is a statement in one of the findings, the city has followed as a college public notice procedures for legislative comprehensive plan amendments. And that's found in TDC thirty to thirty two dash two five zero. They included publishing notice of the city council hearing in the Tuolton Times. Notice of the hearing to the Department of Land Conservation and Development at least thirty five days prior to the first hearing. Notice to affected government entities and publicly posting the notice of the hearing. Further, the city council meeting schedules made available on the internet and notice of both the planning commission meeting and the city council hearing were provided to interested parties. I'm not quite sure what her argument is specifically about not receiving notice, but given that she was apparently able to give full testimony in her comments in opposition to this ordinance today, I do not believe at any rate, even if she was correct, that she was not properly noticed, which it does appear like it did give the proper notice that she was substantially prejudiced and this public hearing can continue.
Thank you. Who's the first? Council Pratt or Counselor Gonzalez?
I do have a question. We continue to bring up the Leaverton and the deficits of that code that that is prohibiting the Leaverton area to to exceed or or to be used. And you're recommending that the Basalt Creek not take that path. Is that correct? Not take the same path as Leaverton campus?
That is correct.
Can we change the Leaverton campus zoning? I know it's a different meeting, but are we able to change that? And why don't we change that?
Yes, you are able to.
Thank you.
Council President Pratt.
Okay, so on I'm going to start with you say under the MP, current MP zone, the tip would be four point five million, but under this proposed zone would be fifty eight million. Is that assuming that you were getting development at the beginning? Where are you? I guess I'm confused as to.
So the assumptions with the lower revenue with the existing manufacturing park district is based on the assumptions that there would be limited development. I mean, we didn't, there are assumptions, right? We don't know for sure. It's possible that someone could come along, but based on our experience with the existing MP zone in Leaverton, where the majority of the development in the last, say, ten years has been you know, like Lamb doing a building addition, JA doing a building addition where it's not a new developer developing a site. We're not see, I mean, anything could happen, but we're not projecting a large amount of development to initially happen. And so it would basically just essentially be, I think, the stakeholder slideshow a little bit more detail, but it basically would be essentially just compounding the existing frozen base to get to that by the end of thirty years. And so there could be like some other scenario that we haven't projected out, but I think that the point is is that we know that having development happen sooner and having basically new assessed values specifically based on new development injected into the zone will result in compounding of that. And then the other factors that we listed in terms of also building its own, you know, frontage improvements, which are things that then we don't have to build to entice businesses to come there, so on and so forth.
So when you projected this out in, you know, the flex development, did you pick a mix of develop, you know, like office and manufacturing and warehouse and wholesale? Or did you pick a mix or did you just kind of make assumption it's just going to develop no matter what the space is used for?
And I'm going to turn Aaron S to answer that specific question. I mean, basically, it's an assumption of assessed value. And so, I mean, it's not necessarily an assumption of specific tenants. But I mean, we basically projected it based on the typology of the development.
Okay, that answers my question. And I'm getting to my big concern here. I really like the flex space idea. My big concern here is the, of course, the letting the seventy percent primary warehouse. And I guess I'm not understanding, what my concern is that every single or the majority of these, this property will be developed that way, which is gonna I don't think it's going to meet or go limiting warehouse space be in that space and and that's a lot to do with traffic and the wages of the jobs. So I'm not understanding why this couldn't just if if we took that out and made it so people, I don't have a problem with people doing that with some of the land, but why wouldn't we just have that be a conditional use permit? So we don't end up with a majority of this devote.
So I mean, a couple of observations, I'd say, one of which is the conditional use permit. We we do have one pathway for certain uses to be developed through a conditional use. The other thing is, is that the intention of a conditional use is that it gets approved. That's the point of it. And so if we have a conditional use that we want to limit, the conditional use isn't the right tool for that. Because the goal of a conditional use is to create an approvable development. And so if you're just simply saying, we don't want all of it to be that way, that wouldn't, that isn't what a conditional use would achieve. The conditional use basically just make sure that that use is compatible. But it doesn't do anything to change the actual nature of the use internally. And so
This could happen.
So I mean, so there are a couple of things and I might invite you to call the applicant or the stakeholders up to get in to get into more detail if my answer doesn't satisfy your question. I mean, so as they pointed out, the seventy per, the thirty percent is a minimum for manufacturing. It could be more. There are also a lot of other tenants and types of uses that are allowed in the zone that are neither manufacturing nor warehousing and distribution that could be part of that mix in there. And based on projects that they successfully developed, that has been the case largely, that it's not that. What they're seeking is they're seeking the flexibility for tenants. And so the other thing I think to think about is is that tenants are not permanent in nature. Unlike a Lamb where Lamb is building this site, you know, buying the site, building a building and they're going to stay there in perpetuity. This is a tenant that, you know, is going to come in and lease, you know, fifteen thousand square feet of space. They might go out of business, then a new tenant might come in. They might expand more into the same building or they might contract. And so like it's the whole intention is for it to be flexible and fluid. I think not for it necessarily to result in one prescribed type of mix. What we have heard and we've listened very closely to this is that the seventy thirty is like the minimum amount of flexibility that will work within their ability to obtain financing for this development type and get it off the ground.
And then I'm just going to pick on you for a couple of little things. And the first one, oh, I went in on the food carts. It says that they have to be have a hundred fifty square feet on Graham's Ferry Road. And I I'm not understanding, are you limit? The whole point of having the food carts here to me is these people probably have half hour lunches. So it's so they can, you know, and to get the traffic up the road somewhere close for them to get food. So where are the food carts being limited to in this zone?
So commercial uses are basically being limited to properties that have frontage on Graham's Ferry Road.
So.
Which is where the most signalization and the most traffic management and the most restriction in traffic occurs. And so that's the best place to have commercial development. Because there's it's it's a arterial roadway. And so there's limited driveways that can happen along there. And so what we're anticipating is is that some users may even have to have a shared driveway. And so the food cart pod, if there is one, would be potentially with a shared driveway with another use or even on the same site as another use. And so two things is that you'd have people from the existing business nearby walking to them. You know, because we have.
If they're all on Graham's Ferry, so you have one way down by Tuolton Sherwood Road, they couldn't put just like one food cart on and
No, this is This is just limited to this district. And so this is basically like a pilot project, if you will. And so kind of not dissimilar to Counselor Gonzalez's point. If the council sees this as something that they want to expand to other areas of the city or do another zone, then there's the option to do that.
That answers that question. And then my last thing for you, and I would like to hear the stakeholder from the stakeholders on the other, but is on the, I gotta find it here in the landscaping. It says, oh, it's the grass thing. It says that within three years, the ground must be covered by living grass or other plant materials. And I guess the like, I don't think it's that living grass is where this, or I personally, I don't think that it meets our environmental, like, and we want, you know, we we wanted pollinators and we want I know we want it to look nice, but pollinators and it's just not a good ground cover anymore or something that, you know, it 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 takes a lot of water, it's chemicals to keep that grass maintained. I think there's a lot of other plantings that would be more desirable.
So I guess maybe to pose a question, would, you know, more flexibility in ground cover, would that feel like that addresses your concern if we added?
Yeah, I I guess, yes.
Can I address this component as as a field expert in the landscape industry? One thing that to keep in mind that though pollinators are a great idea, they truly are. They bring in the insects, they bring in, and I don't want to get into the weeds here. But pollinator plants are really messy. They're high maintenance. We manage pollinator gardens. We install pollinator gardens, but it comes with a very specific care practices. But it comes with a very specific care practices. Having pollinator plants and native plants that attract interest, a good idea. But it wouldn't be something that we would put in in the focal traffic area. It's unsightly, it's messy, it's murky. We always have to create pollinator sections that are very specific in certain areas, near swales. Side yards, things like that. That way the pollinators don't get shoot away on the main traffic. So ideally. Grass, though, we hate grass too at landscape because they're so wasteful. But grass also consumes a lot of pollen, a lot of debris, a lot of dirt, a lot of toxins. Are cleaned up and picked up through grass. As much as that we spend time eliminating grass everywhere. We also need it in some high traffic areas to control the dirt and dust that flies everywhere.
Couldn't you do that with more drought tolerant grasses and other shrubbery?
I hate to say this, but it's it's a fallacy that we we have, we have drought tolerant plants, but they first have to be watered to be established. Takes about a year of watering. Yeah.
After that, you need chemicals and watering constant. Keep that work.
I guess this is a big getting in the weeds kind of situation, but I see what you're going with is that more planting, more natural is always more favorable. But environmental stewards don't necessarily put pollinator plants in high traffic commerçant areas. They don't go hand in hand. We try to use tough plants, tough trees that can take drought. Are not susceptible to insect, can take wind thrashing, can take a car hitting a branch. Tough branches, they're tough shrubs that that don't eat, can make control a lot of water. There is a lot of those kinds of things out. Yeah.
I'm going away from, I I understand what you're saying about the pollination, but I'm saying it's the grass thing also. Like, aren't there others planting set?
Absolutely. There's ground covers, there's birmingham areas. I mean, there's all, again, this is probably getting into details, but yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm done with that one.
So maybe I'm just going to let Aaron interject here because we have the actual piece of the code and we'll just read through it and see if maybe. The existing code gets to what you're looking at with this, with the the second part of it. And if not, we can look at revisions then.
And I I think what we're addressing is table seventy three B five, which applies to any zone. It's not just the Basalt Creek Employment Zone specific. But there's a subsection six pedaled lawns. And one of the bullets says consists of grasses, including sod or seeds of acceptable mix within the local landscape industry. So from my understanding, an acceptable mix might include like a prairie grass mix or a wildflower mix. So it's not that we're looking for grass specifically, it's just developers tend to go with grass. But it it is broad to encompass, I think, some of the elements that you're hoping to achieve.
But we're relying on the developer to make that choice.
That's correct. And maybe for consideration, the Climate Action Plan might be able to include strategies. Or actions that kind of address more of these concerns and call for more zero escaping or things of that nature. We can entertain this idea, but it might take more study just to see how it would impact the city and businesses.
So if we were.
More broadly, if we're going to eliminate grass citywide.
So you're saying that like if we adopted this, this would be another step afterwards to.
Yeah, I mean, I think what, just to. Add on to what Aaron's saying is, is that this would all of a sudden affect development citywide and that isn't specific to this. Like development, so. Right, but this table applies to citywide. It's the what you have before you in your.
Table is, I got.
Right. And so you would also be creating a situation where you're like throwing existing businesses with grass out into being nonconforming with the code. And so I do think Aaron's point that it would be a good idea to more thoughtfully consider it before making changes that apply citywide. Is good. But and so I guess that's the question is that it is left as flexible. But I think it sounds like maybe there's enough flexibility in there. I mean, it's not as optimal as I think. You might like, but.
Well, hopefully developer would want to save money.
Could you read, could you read it again, Aaron? I I it's kind of hard to hear up here.
Yeah, so I'm reading from table seventy three B five, which is minimum standards for trees and plants. And this would apply citywide. These are the following minimum standards that apply to types of landscaping required to be installed for all zones. And then we're looking at six specifically for lawns. And the first bullet consists of. Grasses, including sod or seeds of an acceptable mix within the local landscape industry. And then it goes on to say a hundred percent coverage and weed free and healthy, disease free, damage free. Characteristic of the species. So it it's a broad catchall. But I think that the point is, if you're not including shrubs or trees. Or ground cover, we're looking for a lawn specific treatment, which could be broad and include pollinators or prairie grasses.
The for you, but the.
Kind of understanding you can't.
Yeah.
The other self.
Applies citywide.
Yeah. I would be interested if the stakeholders want to speak to what their plans are.
Just one other thing to add to the point is, is that in looking at the way the table is structured also, you don't have to do grass. You can do ground cover as an alternative as well. Thank you. And did you say you did want to hear from the stakeholders? Okay, do you want a mayor hear from other counselors for questions?
That's the rocks.
Thank you for all your work on this and. My, my first question is, you said it can go up to four stories.
Maximum structure height, I believe, is forty five feet, which is typically about four stories.
Did you show us a picture of four stories?
We didn't include that in the slide deck, no.
Okay. I think in the future, I would appreciate something like that to see what the maximums are because. This would be really forthcoming to everybody in the public because not everyone agrees. And it's, it's tough doing different things on our urban growth boundaries. And so we want to just be really transparent. And I guess some of the other questions I had were around Ms. Lucchini's comments. I just want to address those. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at the email before you came in. But she had watershed concerns and. You know, making sure that it's identified as part of the Willamette River Basin versus the Twelton River Basin. In the Basalt Creek area, which. I I know that's true and some things like that. So I was just curious if you had any responses to those concerns.
So just to, before I answer that, if I may, just to go back to the heights, the the stakeholder presentation showed a roughly forty two foot high. Industrial building in their presentation, it was on the right hand side of the slide. As compared to like a third, a roughly thirty foot building. So it's like a large tall. Distribution facility might be forty ish feet high. We don't have a lot of examples of it in Tallinn necessarily. Most of them have been lower, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care if it's from Twelton, just a sample picture, just so that we are.
That would be the one that would.
Me with the picture.
That would be the one.
Feet high. I just don't think like that that well. I do better with pictures, so that'd be great for me. Just my special needs.
Thank, thank you.
I get, I remember. Yeah, I just didn't know if that's, that's what that was.
Correct. So I did have a chance to glance through Grace's comments, Ms. Lucchini's comments. I think that our city attorney addressed the comment regarding the adequacy of public notice. Specific to some of the other comments, I think that they're all important factors. They're just not specifically things that we've identified as criteria for approval of this specific change. And so there are important factors that we will need to consider as we move forward with any development. Whether that would be the existing manufacturing park zoning or a, excuse me, a changed zoning code. And so I think that it's always helpful to hear those things and to understand what are concerns to area residents. But that would be my answer specific as it pertains to council approval.
I appreciate that and I think that makes sense to me. So we would look at some of the things around drainage and what, and those management systems as we move forward in development. And then at a different time, and then my other question kind of goes to Council President Pratt's considerations around. Environmental awareness and responsibility by development. And just curious around, do we have any incentives or do we do things to incentivize? Green buildings, light refracting roofs, responsible pave, that's a lot of pavement in an area that people aren't used to. And that we've, we've, you know, learned more about and deal more with. With our smoke and everything else that we're dealing with. These days, are there ways that we encourage those kind of mindfulness with the, our partners?
So at this time, we don't have any policies or programs in place. But as we're looking at our climate action plan and some potential strategies to include within that. I think we're beginning to identify some of those components that you're listing. So I think there is an opportunity for those in the future. They just haven't been adopted or established or studied yet.
Okay. And I think the builders understand them too. So I mean, I just want people and and people that are involved with this to know that there. There is a lot of will around responsible stewardship. And that's the kind of thinking we like to see. And so I hope that they consider that when becoming, putting new structures in places, especially places that people consider sensitive. Around the Basalt Creek area. There's a lot of concern around this. I know that we haven't heard them all tonight, but I just want to move forward in the best way possible. And address people's concerns because we hear them. I appreciate the planning committee's work on this, all your work on it. And I appreciate everyone that's come out tonight to testify and on both sides of the issue. Thank you.
Other questions for Steve Byrne?
This has to do with the building design and, you know, it says it's got to be earth tones and all that. And I'm wondering, like, what if you had, I'm going to use, just pull an example of like a children's clinic. And they wanted to paint a kind of cool mural on the building. Would they be allowed to do that?
Let me pull up the code right now just so I can double check and make sure I'm speaking factually.
Basically says earth. I've just had comments from people that like, we're suburban boring. So I thought if someone wanted to actually do that, would we be, would that be allowed?
So I think as part of that question, through our architectural review process. We do have some discretionary standards to review things such as murals. And looking at the standards specifically for this code. And the exterior colors, as long as the dominant exterior color is an earth toned shade. I believe they could do or consider a mural that might be a little bit more fun. Subject to the discretionary review.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions? I just have two. One, can, we talked about this before and just remind me. There was a discussion if a four story facility was going to be placed pretty close to residential. There were certain standards for that four story building. I know one of them was stepped back. Were the, and wasn't there something with lighting too? With someone who's going to be adjacent to the, you know, potential residential zone? Because we, I remember our discussion, we'd want people on the fourth floor looking down. At houses or what we were going to do to mitigate that.
So there, I'm going to, Aaron's going to look up the specific provision just to provide the most accurate response. But there is a provision that limits building height of buildings that are adjacent to residential zones. Within a certain distance of that residential zone to being less than the forty five feet building height. And it allows it to be up to the building height of the other zone, basically that's aboutting it. Okay. And then there's also, which we have for the other portions of the building, there's also the step back. Requirements that are within the design standards as well.
All right. Second question in in relates, I think you might touch on a little bit on Grace's comments. There's no site design, there's no roads, there's nothing right now. This is just in orange to approve. As you're saying, when this goes down the path, if this is approved tonight, that's when we'll get into what the road infrastructure will be. And stuff like that. There's nothing right now, correct?
I mean, so the, so the existing transportation system plan, which was, as you know, from tonight's earlier discussion, was updated last in two thousand thirteen. Was minorly updated in twenty eighteen as part of the Basalt Creek Comprehensive Plan Amendments. To include a roadway network and a pedestrian and bike network for the Basalt Creek area. That is already in place. So this amendment does include some minor changes to that roadway network. That we developed in consultation with Washington County staff because the roadways are currently within their jurisdiction. And the intent of those is to basically design a better buffer between the residential. And industrial uses to provide for like center turn lanes and more distance between the two uses. Because the existing road that separates those two uses is Tonkin Loop and I'm sure you've driven there before. And, you know, it's barely a two lane road at best right now. But under the current plan, it's called for as a local road, which is much more narrow and not a suitable road to be the interface between. Industrial and residential area. And so that's really the only change that is being proposed as part of this. And then ultimately, as things develop, then they'll have to meet the city's development standards for new roadways. Based on the individual classifications of them. Some of them like Graham's Ferry TBD, I guess. But is seeming like it's going to remain a Washington County road for the time being. And the way those are developed is that it's a coordination between city staff. In engineering and Washington County to develop the final, well, is called cross section or how wide the sidewalks are. How wide the bike lanes are and so forth. So that is something that will happen later.
But the, because I'm going back, I'm the only one left, going back to the old Basalt Creek planning with Wilsonville. There was that high level drawing way back when that we were going back for the Wilsonville, about a road network within the the planning zone. And that, in my mind, it was set in stone, it's still murky and that's the impression I'm under that. The road network that were, was drafted ten years ago, isn't the same one. It's morphing and it will probably morph again.
Correct.
Based on what's developed, what's envisioned. Any other questions? Because I do have questions for Bimi, she knows that. Anyone, do you have questions for stakeholders? Right. Bimi.
Thank you, counsel.
You're going to want to bring your traffic person, that's what I'm going to ask you about.
You want to talk about traffic?
Yeah, I'm thinking that.
I expect that.
So I'm just going to shoot the page six of your memo of the traffic, the traffic analysis, shouldn't say study.
The Kittleson traffic memo?
It's got D K S naming on it.
D K S, that was done by the city's traffic engineer.
So I'll reference part of, okay, this is where I'm aiming at. Okay, so. We're looking at, you know, there's a, you know, net decrease because we're changing from manufacturing park to this. Understand that. The questions I have are remind me PM peak hours is when?
It's the highest hour occurring between four to six PM on a weekday.
Okay. And in, and I might be looking at the wrong chart, I apologize. I see no counts for AM peak. We've got a high school there. Was there any look at the?
I believe you're referencing the D K S study. I'm I'm with Kittleson.
Did Kittleson look at that? I mean, my, like, here's where I'm getting at.
I'm trying to find it. Planning package.
So you're gonna, you're gonna have twenty thousand trips generated in that area. We already know it's congested. Maybe he's been through a hearing before. When you're feeding the Boonsterry Road, feeding into an old out facility, that's not so great. And I'm just wondering, getting to these numbers, I realize it's lower than the trip crap we assumed. But. The, what I'm foreseeing is the impacts around Commerce Circle. And where's? Uh, and where's, I don't know if you got into the weeds on this yet. Where the, where do we see, is the traffic going to be leaving the industrial zone going towards ODOT's facility? Or we envision it going north, hopefully ideally never going up Boonsterry Road.
Can, can we get our PowerPoint back up?
Sure.
We've got a trip distribution map.
Thank you.
Um, that'll help graphically, because we all like graphics. Help show the presumed trip dis- distribution.
And I'll, I'll answer the first question. I, I can't speak to DKS's study. But the study that we did, um, separately did look at a comparison of both the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour. Between the MP zone and the, uh, proposed, uh, BCE zone. And both the AM peak hour trip generation and the PM peak are lower with the proposed zone.
It's my concern is. AM and PM is also the same peak hours of the high school on Boonsterry Road. So both will be basically the same time of day. So where I'm getting at is. When this develops, and this might be, Steve might have to come up. Are that tip is going to be in transportation improvements. What are we envisioning besides Graham's Ferry Road, which is a county facility? What improvements are going to be needed? Graham's Ferry Day Road. Uh, around Commerce Circle going to ODOT, the ODOT facility. Will the TIF? What's going to finance the rope, the road improvements we're going to need in order to make sure this doesn't go from a D to an F in that area?
So, um, number one, any development will need to do a traffic study.
Right.
Um, so they will need to show that they are not degrading the roadway system. And if they are, they are providing mitigation for it. In addition to that, you will have the tax increment financing to do capital improvement projects that you as a city identify as the priority. Um, furthermore, if you look at the trip distribution, which is very hard to read, understandable, um. Uh, the, the trips associated with this, um, district are going to try to get to I five. And they're going to try to get to ninety-nine. So, um, they're not really focused on the high school area. Uh, everything's got implications. I'm, I'm not saying it won't. Um, but the primary destinations are those two highway systems. Um, so there, it, it shouldn't be. Extreme exacerbation of the high school situation. Um, it's a help.
It helps a little bit because like I had the same thing in my head about Sherwood School District. Basalt, you know, as you know, that area, those houses are going to be in Sherwood. So we're going to have a lot of trip shooting out there. Heading pretty much the same way towards nine-nine W. Um, so you're envisioning, most of the folks are going to be going to I five or heading up the hundred twenty-fourth. Pick it up to ninety-nine W.
Right.
That's where I'm just nervous. I mean, the rest of the plan I'm pretty okay with is just traffic. You, you get beat up about it. I get beat up about it. That area is getting, um. Hit, you know, a lot of developments occurring and I just want to make sure between Washington County and the state. And whatever facilities we end up inheriting, that we can maintain these systems, because. Uh, I've been, I've gone down Boonsterry Road at prime time where it's backed up to the SEPA facility. And you just crawl the whole way down to Commerce Circle in the afternoons. And then, you know, seeing more trucks come in from that area, it kind of gets me nervous.
Sure.
I want the area to develop, but we gotta work on the traffic and make sure when we do the. Site planning and review process that we're, uh, really looking at. What improvements need to be made quickly versus taking five, ten years? Cause people are frustrated now.
Right. Uh, but you know, to, to, um, Mr. Parr's comments, if you don't do anything.
Right.
You know, that's not good either. You end up with contractor establishments that where you've seen the pattern. Uh, that's, nobody wants that. Well, actually I know a few people who do want it, but.
And so the twenty-three hundred, that's not just trucks. That's combination trucks, cars, people going back and forth to the facility, anticipated. Trucks leaving a warehousing as far as the AM peaks and PM peaks.
Again, this is in the DKS study.
Or yours, either one.
Yes. So our, our analysis, um, sorry, I'm trying to find the twenty-three hundred value. But, um, our analysis looked at, yes, a combination. And so the, the total trips, including trucks. Would be less, um, under this proposed zoning code. Um, so then. Then the specific traffic impacts at an intersection level would be addressed through a traffic impact analysis at the time of development. Right now, we're just looking at that overall impact of the, the zone.
And this keeps us intact with the trip cap we approved way back when in the, with Basalt Creek with Wilsonville? Okay. All right. Go ahead.
So when you did the traffic study, what, I'm back to my question of like this flex space development, depending on who moves in there. There's going to be a whole different number of vehicles. So how did you determine? You know, like if you had, back to my warehousing as opposed to, I don't know, like medical clinics.
Yeah, for this, we did look at the allowed uses and, uh, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, um, national rates. Trip generation rates for those uses. Um, so we looked at, you know, what would be the reasonable worst case development? The highest generating uses under the MP zoning and compared that to what would, could be, um, the highest kind of combination. Of uses under the limitations of the BCE zoning. And, and that's how we're coming up with that reduction in the, um, peak hour trip generation potential.
Uh, in regards to the, the mixture of uses, um, staff was spot on in regards to their response. This, this really is not a single end user that comes in and builds a build-to-suit. A final manufacturing facility. It is, it is a, uh, master developer that builds flex space. And those tenants come and go. And that flexibility, um, is critical to how the project is financed. Uh, how it gets leased up, how they keep it fully leased up. Um, because they can adapt to the marketplace. They can change the size of the rental spaces that they have. Um, that is what makes this use work so incredibly well and adaptive to the market. So whatever businesses need space within your, your community, this type of development can probably accommodate it. And keep them in Twalton instead of going to place else.
Council Hill, you head up.
Well, yeah, I just would like a clarification of what the baseline traffic is. It, and does it include autumn sunrise and all that stuff as, and, and does it just take that into account as a foundational? As you're doing your traffic study with all the new six, the six hundred nineteen homes in there, so in process development. Was that all modeled?
No, so we were just looking at what could be developed within the BCE area.
Right, but so. The baseline transfer, traffic that is happening now was not part of that. It was only the impact of what's happening there.
So far, we've only looked at the change. Um, when, when it comes time to, uh, for development. That's when you would look at existing conditions and what's planned. And then the, the additional impact of development on top of that.
Other questions for stakeholders? Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, come on back.
Thank you, Mary. So just to hopefully clarify a little bit about the transportation analysis that was done for the project. So what is called for is we're comparing the existing zone, the MP zone, which was already determined to meet the trip cap. By when it was adopted as part of the Basalt Creek Comprehensive Plan Amendments. And so there are two, two parts, which is the Transportation Planning Rule compliant traffic analysis, which is a long-term look. In basically the planning horizon, the next twenty years at the reasonable worst case development. So basically takes all of the parcels in the Basalt Creek area and says, like, what do we think is kind of likely? To develop here and then also of those things, the most traffic intense uses. And so basically we figured like, well, you can only build this much commercial, but it's more traffic intense. But we're going to basically like put the maximum amount that we think is reasonable for commercial outlets. Given our restrictions of having along Boonsterry Road. And then we're going to, you know, do basic, we're going to look at what uses could be developed. And we're going to say, well, okay, manufacturing of this nature is the most traffic intense development. And we think this is reasonable. We think some amount of warehousing is going to be reasonable no matter what. And so we basically created a mixture of what we thought was. Like a reasonable development scenario for the next twenty years with worst case traffic generating uses. With the idea being that it kind of could only, hopefully only be lesser than that. But again, it's just for the, it's like an academic exercise, just for the purposes of this. So. As Bimi and the, um, her sub consultant mentioned, uh. Each development as it's approved is going to do its own traffic analysis. And so that's what's called a built year traffic analysis. And so that built year traffic analysis is going to have to incorporate things like in process developments. And so like if. Uh, for example, autumn sunrise isn't done, but we know how many trips are going to be generated by the time it's done building all the four phases. That's still going to have to be incorporated in that analysis of someone building, uh, industrial flex space over on the other side. Of the canyon and then any other things. And they'll also look at known, uh, in process developments that are likely to affect it. From other jurisdictions like Wilsonville or Sherwood, if they're close enough. And so those all kind of go into the traffic analysis for the built year. And then that traffic, that developer that's creating the traffic. Has to basically within certain legal limitations on proportionality. And they pay their share of the impact of that overall, uh, traffic condition. That they're responsible for building improvements that satisfy that or mitigate for it. And so each of those is going to have to do that. Another piece, which I'm actually kind of, I didn't mention before it, I'm glad to have the opportunity to do that. Is that part of our current transportation system plan update. And so going to our conversation earlier tonight of the integration. Of land use changes in transportation is that we are specifically going to study intersections throughout the city for operational capacities. And so one of those that we specifically picked is going to be the Tonkin and Graham's Ferry intersection of Boonsterry. Because there's a lot of unknowns that I'm hearing from the council and we've heard this also from the community. And so we specifically want to make sure that we're doing our plans for transportation in alignment with our land use plans. And so I hope that answers the questions about traffic.
Remind me, you said. Primary egress, ingress. It's going to be a Graham, Graham's Ferry Road, that's.
For, for commercial businesses is going to be businesses with frontage along. There will be other businesses that will have, that will have access, depending on how it develops on other roadways. The one that's a known, um, restriction is that no businesses will have access on Basalt Creek Parkway. Which is specifically why that Tonkin-Grams is an important intersection to study. Because all of the traffic is going to get funneled that way, even though the signal is actually planned at, uh, Basalt Creek Parkway and Graham's.
Okay. Does the county anticipate any additional lights on Graham's Ferry or just this one right now?
That's what we need to study. I mean, I think that's an important key because it's close. But there's going to be a lot of traffic. And so it's really important to know that answer instead of just guess.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I'm just, we're getting kind of beyond this, but, um, if, um. So say half of this is developed and we've got Autumn Sunrise and Planback and maybe something on that nine acres. So, um, what determines when the developer has to do something about the roads? Like at that point, it might be an F. If it's already failing, do they have to do anything?
So, I mean, there's, it, it's probably a more complicated topic and we should have Mike McCarthy come back and get, have a conversation about it. I mean, there are sort of legal restrictions on how much a developer can be required individually. To, um, you know, contribute to a specific improvement. So it depends on the scale of the improvement necessary to do. To mitigate for the condition. If the, if it's already failing in the current year, that's probably a situation where, I mean, with some exception. Unless it's like within a minimal tolerance or it's already zoned for. I mean, so an example of that was the Nyberg Apartments, the, um, the ODOT. So the actual facilities that are in Twalton were performing within, within standards. But the on, the ODOT on-ramp was not operating based on their performance standards. However, there is not an identified mitigation planned. Nor is there really one, quite frankly, that's conceivable or like without, you know, hover cars or something or a fly, you know, a flyover clover leaf. And so because of the fact that it's a small, like it's within, uh, I guess. Within a small meter of it and it's not impacting the other, um, facilities. That was an example of something where it was technically failing, but it was able to be approved because the site was already zoned for it. And so that's an example. So if they had had to do an upzone in order, like if they wanted to get more density out of the site. Then that wouldn't have been able to be approved because of that failing condition.
Okay. But for our purposes tonight, you're saying if this was left MP, it would actually be more traffic than if we do this BCE zone.
Based on the reasonable worst case development. And I think the thing to maybe put a point on just for clarification is, is that. In comparing, even though, you know, I talked about how under the TIF scenario, the tax increment financing, we saw MP is unlikely to develop. We don't do it that way for traffic analysis. We just assume that there are squares on a piece of land that will develop with uses in the zone. And we ignore the fact that it's not a particularly feasible zone. So I just want to make sure that that point is clear.
Thank you.
The questions for Steve, Mary. All right, with that, I guess we'll switch gears into deliberations. Council Brooks, then Counselor President Pratt.
Okay. I just want to say again that I appreciate everyone's work and it's been a long conversation. And I appreciate the conversation around, I know that people are very concerned about traffic. And I know that when we have a conversation between a developer owner and somebody that rents. It's also going to be hard to keep people if they can't get to and from where they're supposed to be operating. So that's some, one of, some of the risks of rental versus ownership, right? Um, and one of the things that we talked about early on in this conversation was about wages. And reducing trips just by people living in Twalton, be able to work in Twalton, which those numbers didn't really pencil out. So those are some of the concerns that I have around, um, this change. However, I, um, think that the work is good. And I can understand the need for, um, flexibility and space and use. I still have, um, conceptual under, wonderings about the difference between some of the flex use spaces. That would be like, I don't see it like a medical building being able to be a manufacturing place and swap those uses out. So some of the use diversification, I'm hopeful around, and I hope that we see some of that. And when we look at this, um, and, but I, I just don't see in the same building. Maybe I'm wrong. Anyway, those are, those are my initial thoughts around all of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pratt.
Well, um, yeah, my, I'm still concerned about it. I, I get the flex space and I get that we have. Basically we have two choices here and what we, the MP just doesn't work. So even though I have some reservations, um, the traffic, unfortunately, that's part of, we have a traffic problem now. It's going to increase no matter how we develop this and it's going to develop. So, um, I'm generally, I, I think. You, you've put a lot of work into this and, um, I wish I can tweak it a little bit. I think it's, um, the best option right now. I guess the only thing that I would say is when I, um, ran for office and was elected, um. One of the things that I knew would be a standard for me to be able to look in the mirror was if I was adding zoning. Um, that would allow marijuana and any other things like that to be in our community. And, um, it was a fervent no. I would not vote for something like that because of the health and wellness of our community. Um, I hear all of this. I understand all of the work and, um, think it would have been allowed anyway. And so I recognize that this is not allowing something new. But I do want to say that especially with the manu, the potential owners of the space and that sort of thing. That is a very big concern in our community across.
That is a very big concern in our community across our nation. And um how it's impacting, how it will impact um employees. And um that is a huge concern of mine. And so whereas I I can see the need for this in our community. Um, I I really hope that we don't see that in our community anymore.
Okay, councillor Gonzalez.
So thank you for the, for the time and all this information. Um. I I'm in support of the flex use. Um, I do work with a lot of businesses that that are in these types of facilities. Uh, they're always very mindful of their, the presence of the, the outlook of their properties. The the concern that councillor President Pratt has of the landscaping, uh in my experience in working with uh developers. That build these type of facilities, landscaping is top of mind. As a matter of fact, not only is it top of mind, they're also looking ways to conserve resources. When they partner with a, a good. Partner, they recommend, they recommend removing turf, they recommend water conservation. Which reminds me that our city of Twalton does not provide any kind of water credits for. Um MP rotators, smart controllers, there's no incentives. So as we're building the climate action plan, I hope. That we at least bring those incentives to the forefront and 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 lead. Um, we're talking about building designs and environmentally friendly, but we're not even doing the basics. Providing our own residents with credits by saving their own water. So we should begin there as the most minimum low hanging fruit. These businesses will also get these credits to conserve resources. Uh be incentivized to remove the landscape in high maintenance. That is already out there. Um, so I'm comforted by the experience of uh these builders that I've worked with in the past. I'm I'm in support of this fully. I think it allows opportunity uh for a lot of new business to come in. And once again, traffic continues to be an issue. But we've done it to ourselves. I I don't know what to say about that. Uh, we cannot tear down. Homes on opposite sides of each street to build wider roads, we just can't do that. The the Oregon itself has limited the road development. They pushed us into public traffic, public traffic, uh transportation. So what are we to do? Not build, not develop flex spaces when we've done it to ourselves and limiting public cars? Um, so this is a good plan. It's a good balance. So as these developers come into place, I'm sure there'll be some arc reviews that we'll consider. Um, that can meet some of these goals that we have for our city. And when it comes to environmental stewardship, very important. So I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Oh, how do we do it?
Title.
Okay.
First year of title.
All right, um I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number one force. Is that the right one?
First reading.
Sorry. Uh, to consider uh first reading of ordinance by title only of one four eight zero dash twenty three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for first reading by title only. Of ordinance number one four seven nine dash twenty, I'm on the wrong one, sorry. Of ordinance one four eight zero dash twenty three. Got a little ahead. Any discussions on those motions? Since your mic is on, uh councillor Gonzalez.
I vote yes, support.
Councillor Brooks. Councillor Sacco.
I.
Councillor Hillier.
I.
Councillor Reyes.
Yes.
That's President Pratt.
I.
I vote I also.
An ordinance relating to land use, amending Twalton Comprehensive Plan Chapters four and ten. And maps eight dash one, eight dash three, eight dash four and ten dash one. Amending Twalton Municipal Code Title nine dash ten. Amending and creating new provisions in Twalton Development Code Chapters thirty one, thirty eight, thirty nine, sixty two, sixty five, seventy three A. And seventy three B, PTA twenty three dash two and PMA twenty three dash two.
We had to read the whole thing?
Yeah, I'll make a motion of uh second reading of ordinance number one four eight zero dash twenty three. By title.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for second reading by title only. Ordinance number one four eight zero dash twenty three. Any discussions on this motion? Councillor Gonzalez.
Uh, I'm in approval.
Councillor Brooks.
I.
Councillor Sacco.
I.
Councillor Hillier.
I.
Councillor Reyes.
Yes.
Councillor President Pratt.
I.
Chair votes I also.
An ordinance relating to land use, amending Twalton Comprehensive Plan Chapters four and ten and maps eight dash one. Eight dash three, eight dash four and ten dash one. Amending Twalton Municipal Code Title nine dash ten. Amending and creating new provisions in Twalton Development Code Chapters thirty one, thirty eight, thirty nine, sixty two, sixty five, seventy three A. And seventy three B, PTA twenty three dash two and PMA twenty three dash two.
I'll make a motion for approval of ordinance number one four eight zero dash twenty three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval slash adoption of ordinance number one four eight zero dash twenty three. Any discussions on those motions? Flip it over councillor Sacco.
I.
Councillor Hillier.
I.
Councillor Reyes.
Yes.
Councillor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councillor Brooks.
I.
Councillor President Pratt.
I.
And the chair votes I also, the ordinance is adopted. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number, general business. Item number one, consideration of ordinance number one four seven nine dash twenty three. Amending Twalton Municipal Code to extend the hours of prohibited parking. And adding Southwest Blackford Drive and Osage Street. Understand, uh, this is a third reading because first second fail.
Correct, we do not have a staff report.
Do we have a motion for third reading?
I'll make a motion for a third reading of ordinance number one four seven nine dash twenty three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for a third reading, title only. For a third reading, whatever. One four seven nine dash twenty three. Any discussions on that motion? Right, councillor Gonzalez.
I.
Councillor Brooks.
I.
Councillor Sacco.
I.
Councillor Hillier.
I.
Councillor Reyes. Councillor President Pratt.
I.
And I vote I also.
I don't think we actually need a third reading. However, I'm gonna read it because you voted on it, you read it on. So an ordinance relating to parking, amending Twalton Municipal Code at eight dash one dash two five two. To extend the hours of prohibited parking and to add additional streets.
Um, and I make a motion to uh for consideration of passing ordinance number one four seven. Nine dash twenty three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance one four seven nine dash two three. Any discussions and emotions? Councillor Gonzalez.
I.
Councillor Brooks.
I.
Councillor Sacco.
No.
Councillor Hillier.
I.
Councillor Reyes. Councillor President Pratt.
I.
The chair votes I, it's a six for yes and one no. All right. Moving on, uh, item number two, general business, recommendation of applicants for the Twalton Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Access. Or otherwise Idea Advisory Committee. We have three representatives in the council who are at Chataback.
I just want to say that it was, um, it's been two years, I think, since we started this uh process and I was. Um, a part of the beginning and um. It's, it's here and it's finally completed. We had a lot of great people come, uh, different. Backgrounds, different abilities, um. Mothers, fathers, people just in general from our community. Um, coming to our, to these interviews, taking their time and it was. It was very um a learning experience for me and. I believe from the, of the committee as well. And so we're, we're happy to finally um come to this final. Part of the process and um. And I just want to thank everyone that participated, every single one of you from the beginning. I mean, it's been a while, but it's here finally. So thank you.
You're reading the um.
Right? Okay. Um. Sorry about that. Um, so on April tenth, the city council adopted the ordinance. To create the Idea Advisory Committee. Um, and this comes on the heels of the council's commitment to fostering diversity and inclusion. Um, which is reflected in its dedication to selecting committee members. Who bring a broad spectrum of perspectives to the table as outlined in the ordinance. This work supports the city council's vision of Twalton as an inclusive community that promotes equity, diversity and access. In creating a meaningful quality of life for everyone. And being a connected, informed and civically engaged community that embraces our city's diversity. Counselors emphasize the importance of ensuring. Representation from underrepresented communities and different economic backgrounds. Um, so after a robust recruitment process, the CCAA conducted interviews with twenty applicants on August eighth and ninth. Uh, section two of the ordinance states that the committee shall consist of nine to thirteen members who shall be appointed for three year. Terms or until their successors are appointed. Of the initial members who are appointed, the term length shall be staggered as determined by the city council. Um, so you'll see in your um, in the report that those term limits are, are those terms, I'm sorry, are listed. Next to the appointees' names. Um. The applicants recommended for appointment include individuals who are persons of color, including Asian, Latin American and Pacific Islander. People who um identify um as being uh part of the LGBTQIA plus community. Older adults, persons with differing abilities, immigrants, parents, renters and people who have experienced homelessness. Ten are Twalton residents from throughout the city and two reside outside of Twalton, including one student who attends Twalton High School. Um, so the CCAA, um, they put forward the following names.
We have twelve people, um, number one, Angelica Butler, BJ Park, Chris Paul. Destiny Barajas, Erin Stimson, Jerry, Jerry Preston. Jasmine Wilder, Kalina Fusitua. I apologize on that one. Rebecca Morgan, Valerie Hope, Wing Shen, Winnie Low. And our student representative is Yuthika Pandey.
I make a motion, right? Uh, I make a motion to um. Recommend applicants for the Twalton um Idea Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the selections of the CCAA. For the Idea Committee. Any discussions on the motions? Uh, this is not a roll call vote, so uh all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh abstentions, it's unanimous. That bring, nothing was removed from consent, so we can skip past that. Uh, so council of communications, so floors will refer council of communication. Councillor Sacco.
I'm sorry, I should have had this ready. Um, so I wanted, I brought this up um two weeks ago and I wanted to revisit. Um, we received an email from um the Twalton Library Advisory Committee. Um, to uh request that we recognize banned book week October first through the seventh. Um, and I wanted to bring that back up uh for discussion if there is an appetite uh to. Um, create a proclamation next, I guess it's almost next month, uh October first through the seventh. Um, to recognize banned book week.
I'm in favor of that.
Uh, do you have any draft language yet or no?
I do not.
Carolyn instructed us that this week.
People's hands up because I see red lights on, so I'm trying to tell. All right, so. Do I have four folks who are in favor of advancing?
So I'm not in favor of this. Okay, let me, let me, if I have to flirt for a few minutes.
Sure.
There has been an overreach from the public schools of sexualizing our kids. Okay. The unenrollment of the schools, it isn't just because of COVID, it is because the schools have overreached. And us as Twalton continuing to provide these highly sexualized books to our kids. It's, it's predatory and it's not healthy. Um, if we want to provide these kinds of books. Then. Parents should buy these books for the kids. I don't think that we as a public should be promoting these kinds of graphic books. Um, I would be happy to bring some of these books and read them in the public eye. And allow me to read these books uh openly, to discuss it. And uh when we have a. Eight percent unenrollment in school, in Tiger Twalton School District because of the overreach of schools. That is not right. And for Twalton to continue with that, it is also now looking at the best interest of the young kids. If they were adults, no problem, all day long, go for it. But these books are being catered to first and sixth graders. They should be adults to be able to read these kinds of graphic books. They're pretty graphic. I have kids that age and and a lot of parents who have pulled their kids from the public schools. Is because of this one reason that the schools have overreached. They do a great job, the schools, there's a place for, because there's a lack of accountability with parents, kids going to school not dressed. Um fed and all these other things. But to now add sexualized education uh at this level is just not acceptable. Um, and many people who I are in support of not allowing these books.
Councillor Brooks and councillor Pratt.
Um, I just want to be clear that this is about the library and not about schools and um. When we talk about banned books, I want to be really clear that we live in a free country. Um, part of the reason why people. Um, appreciate being in the United States is because they have the opportunity of reading things that are sometimes. Um, politically or otherwise charged. Some of the books that have been on banned books are amazing to me. Um, because they're the books that I studied in high school, like nineteen eighty four. Um Judy Bloom and some others. Um, and uh. I, I also just want to say having a proclamation to support our library staff when they put themselves forward. And help people um access diverse opinions and views. Is something that I really stand behind. I stand behind our staff. I stand behind our library and I stand behind access to information.
President Pratt.
Uh, basically the same thing councillor Brooks said. This is about our library and parents have the choice to take their children there. So many of these books on these banned book lists I've read and. The basic tenet of our country is that we have this freedom and if we don't have a freedom to. Um, read um diverse opinions or that question. Our society or, you know, just to hear different perspectives if we're. Limiting that and we're letting a select group of people limit what everybody can read that it's just, it's totally opposed to what. This country stands for to me.
You want to read for sure?
Yeah, um, I am also, I, I, I'm also in agreement. I hear that I is. You know, the library and the library is not, um, we have people from all over the world come and visit and read. Um, I, I read the books, well, not read the books, but I saw the list of books that. Were considered banned. And then I was at Paul's bookstore. And there was another, uh, there was also a category that was called, uh, read the, the. What is it? Forbidden Apple. And it was, there were books there that I had no idea they were banned, like nineteen eighty four or. Um, The Color Purple. I, I was shocked to, to see that because I grew up reading those books. And I thought they were really, they were important to the um. To what I was learning about this culture, about this country with different, you know, people from the south, people from. From New York, people from the west coast and I, and just, I just don't like banning things. I feel like people should have access to these kinds of. Books whether they're, um, and you have choices as an adult that have a choice to read the books or not. Um, I don't, I think that if we're gonna highlight books in the, in the list of, this is one thing that maybe. I, I will suggest is that if we're gonna read, you know, oh, if you're gonna ban these books. I would suggest to ban, to read other books too that are being banned, not just the ones that are in the list of. Um, from the email that we got. So maybe, you know, like nineteen, like select those books as well. Put those books out there that they are being banned. And, and I think that will be, bring awareness that not just. Some books are being banned, but also the other books that are not highlighted there. So if we are gonna highlight books and we're gonna mention titles of books. I want to see the other books that are not in that. I want to see the other books that are not in that, on that list as well. So there's a balance of, you know, so I can, I didn't know, like I say, I went to, to Books Paul uh store, bookstore and I'm like, I didn't even know that book was banned. Um, so and I don't have children, so I don't know what they're reading, but if I, I, I would expose my kids to some, some of the books that I read when I was growing up, like definitely Animal Farm and nineteen eighty-four, you know, so.
All right, so it sounds like we got the four votes. So I guess Council Sacco, are you going to work with Sherilyn on the proclamation verbiage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. All right, uh, I think that's it. Any other communications? Okay, Council Pratt.
Just want to remind everybody that school starts next week and to be careful on the road.
Uh, I got one, remember the historical societies have in their fun uh events, September ninth, eighth? That's Saturday, the Saturday after Labor Day weekend at the Heritage Center. Tickets are sold for sale. You get a discount if you purchase in ahead of time at the Heritage Center's website. Uh, they finagled me into emceeing and being auctioneers. This would be kind of weird for me to do. Uh, but it'll be a lot of fun and looking forward to seeing folks there. Anything else? Council Brooks.
I just also want to remind people that it's Labor Day and to think about people that work and um, read more about history um of why this holiday started. Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I vote second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. Good night. Have a good evening, everyone.